I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, City of Lakewood, Colorado, April 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul?
Here.
Lloyd Ball?
Here.
Gutwin?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Johnson?
I'm here.
Franks?
Here.
Harrison?
I'm here too.
You have a quorum.
Great. Good evening, welcome. I want to thank you all for taking the time to come out tonight. And for those who may be viewing at home or checking us out on a later date, I ask that if you do have a cellphone, you put it on silent. And if you will, please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance and we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, again, welcome. We have a nice packed agenda for the evening, although it may be shortened by a little bit. So, we will have things go a little bit out of order, and I'm going to ask the clerk to please read items 24 and 25 into the record.
Item 24, ordinance O-2019-12, to rezone land located at 3113 South Wadsworth Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado, 80227 County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Item 25, ordinance O-2019-15, vacating right-of-way for South Ammon Street between West Duquesne Avenue on the north and West Eastman Place on the south.
All right, thank you very much. I am now going to open the public hearing on both ordinances, ordinance 19-12 and 19-15. And I'm going to ask Mr. Napier of Richmond American, who is the applicant, to please come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you.
Can you pull the microphone closer? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jared Carlin with Norris Design. We're representing Richmond American House this evening.
All right.
Well, we'd like to formally request that we continue items 24 and 25 to the June 10th City Council hearing for scheduling conflict reasons.
Okay. So, I will just readdress the question, because we have, this is an issue of great interest. So, the request is to postpone until June 10th, 2019, which would mean council votes for that extension. The public hearing will then be postponed until then. We'll take no public comments on that tonight, because it will be a new public hearing, or a public hearing that's extended. So, is there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bita?
What was the reason again for the continuance?
Scheduling conflicts within our team, and there's been multiple hearing dates set for this and changing recently.
Mayor Pro Tem, Abel?
What other dates had been set for this?
The March 25th date was set originally, and we were pushed there from that date. And...
Was it on our agenda for the 25th? Or was it formally scheduled for that date?
I'm not aware of those were dates that were discussed with the city staff.
So, Mr. Cox, if you may, and thank you, you can take a seat.
Thank you.
All right. So, this is a legal request?
Right. It's always within the purview of the applicant to ask for additional time for whatever reason he or she thinks is suitable.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, then, I guess it would be a motion for continuance until June 10th, 2019. Would be the motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
So, hold up. I'm not making the motion. Mayor Pro Tem?
Does this cause us scheduling conflicts? Will this be difficult for our staff or for us to put on the June 10th meeting? What is that agenda like already?
Yes, we do have, the upcoming meetings do have pretty packed agendas. On June 10th, we actually have only one first reading ordinance at this time. So, that is one of the few meetings that doesn't already have a lot of agenda items.
So, June 10th would be the first reading or the second?
It would be the second reading for this project.
Okay. Do we have any other second reading ordinances that night?
At this time, we do not.
Thank you. Mayor, I move to continue ordinance O-2019-12 to the June 10th regular City Council meeting.
One second, please. Could you also include 2019-15?
There are two separate items with two separate...
Maybe...
Can we do them both at once? It's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay. I also, well, can I have a second to that, to the first motion?
Second.
Okay.
And I move to continue ordinance, I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Since we're doing it separately, let's take a separate vote on 2019-12. Is there any other questions? Counselor Bita, you have a question?
Yes. So, I just, clarification first of all from legal counsel. So, you said it's within the purview of the applicant to ask for a postponement, but I assume ultimately it's still in the discretion of the council whether to grant that request or not, correct?
That's correct.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be going through this exercise.
That's why they're here tonight, right.
Okay. And then, secondly, I guess I was wondering if we could get like a, just a showing of the number of people that are here and that we would be, that are here for this hearing and that we would be inconveniencing tonight? Could we at least get an indication of that?
If we go ahead and continue it?
You want me to, could I ask, how many people are here for this rezone? Could you raise your hands? Okay. Looks, thank you.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Counselors Gutwin and Harrison, are you speaking to the motions? Counselor Harrison and Counselor Gutwin.
It's, I really support this motion because of the fact that this was, we've gotten a lot of emails on it, and I feel like giving another two weeks to have input from our constituents is important. So, I would like to, I think the rescheduling really makes sense, and I'd like to ask council for that support.
Counselor Gutwin?
I want to agree, and I also want to really apologize to those of you that are here tonight for the inconvenience to speak on this motion. I also think that, you know, having an opportunity for more public weigh-in is going to be a good thing. We did have this information on Lakewood Speaks that said that it was probably going to get postponed. And so, my other concern is that a lot of the people who do want to speak on this issue were under the understanding that it was actually not going to happen tonight. And we also let people know at our ward meeting that it was likely to get delayed. And so, we certainly have had a lot of interest in this, and so, I also would like to ask council to support the delay. Thank you.
Counselor Franks?
Right. I did just want to weigh in. Council recently had the R10 on kind of the docket to talk about, and at that time, we thought we were just putting a tool in the tool belt and didn't realize that there was actually a project for which it was being contemplated. So, I definitely support this. We now need more time to take a look. So, it's important, in my view, to have that extra time, considering now we have an actual project that had been discussed, and I don't think many of us were aware. We thought we were really putting just a tool in the tool belt for planning staff to have, and in this case, we have a live project. So, I support the delay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. Mayor Pro Tem, will you please read the next motion?
I move to continue ordinance O-2019-15 to the June 10th, 2019 regular City Council meeting.
So, a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. All right. And that passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. And again, thank you all very much. And for a quick question, will Lakewood Speaks remain open for the next few weeks? For comments, for additional comments? Ms. Hodson?
Yes.
What will probably happen, I don't know that we've ever had one delay this long. What will probably happen is it'll go into pending mode until the two-week period before the hearing, but we may have an option to leave it open the whole time as well. I don't, it'll be one of those two.
Thank you very much. And to reiterate, land use rezones are complicated and can be sometimes frustrating for our community members as well, because they're considered quasi-judicial. So, you're not going to get individual correspondence from your council members, but every email that is received goes to the planning department, and that becomes a part of our whole record, or it's available on Lakewood Speaks. So, we do see those, but I know for some people, you know, have said, "Well, you haven't responded." That's why you don't get responses, and, but they do go into the file. They're all presented to the whole body at the same time. So, you're encouraged to continue to participate and send those, and that's kind of the process in a nutshell. So, with that, we're going to move into a few proclamations. Will the clerk please read item four?
Item four, proclamation, the 30th anniversary of Dinosaur Ridge.
Fantastic. I'm going to invite down a great friend of Lakewood, Mr. Jeff Lamontaine, the executive director of Dinosaur Ridge, who's going to come down and join me and bring down some of his partners, but no dinosaurs.
No dinosaurs tonight.
Welcome. And I'm going to ask Counselor Franks if she would please read the proclamation. Welcome.
The 30th anniversary of Dinosaur Ridge. Whereas three decades ago, members of the scientific community and surrounding neighborhoods joined together to protect the world-class paleontological treasures from further erosion, vandalism, and theft. And whereas the Friends of Dinosaur Ridge mission is to educate the public about and to ensure the preservation of the natural and historic resources of Dinosaur Ridge, Triceratops Trail, and the surrounding areas. And whereas nearby Rooney Ranch was homesteaded in the early 1860s, and the first material ever collected from the world-famous Morrison Formation of late Jurassic age was found at Dinosaur Ridge in 1877. And whereas Dinosaur Ridge Trail is famous for its dinosaur tracks, bone, and unique geological features with more than 15 fossil and geologic sites, over 300 individual animal tracks, three distinct dinosaur and one crocodilian, a unique frozen snapshot of a tidal habitat from 100 million years ago. And whereas in 1989, the Friends of Dinosaur Ridge was formed to address increasing concerns regarding the preservation of the site and to offer educational programs on the area's resources. And Dinosaur Ridge piloted its first summer camp for 10- to 12-year-old students in 1995, and the site of the first stegosaurus discovery. And whereas Dinosaur Ridge is now welcoming more than 230,000 visitors annually, becoming a top-rated tourist attraction and has earned worldwide distinction among paleontologists. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the City of Lakewood, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 30th anniversary of Dinosaur Ridge.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this honor. Excuse my little bit of frogginess, it's springtime allergies. I do want to recognize tonight our board president, Marsha Barber, our development director, Michelle Davis, and our operations director, Robin Morris. Robin and Michelle in particular have been planning the 30th anniversary events that are coming up in a few weeks, which I'm going to talk just a little bit about. I also want to thank the city, especially the mayor, Kathy Hodson, Stacey Olden, for the support around this 30th anniversary event, but also over the years. When I talked to Joe Temple, who some of you may know, he was the longtime executive director at Dinosaur Ridge, and I said, you know, "Who should we really think about inviting and involving in our big 30th anniversary celebration?" And on his first short list was Adam and others in Lakewood, and the city of Lakewood in general, because his sense, I've only been there a little over two years, but his sense was that in his 16 years, the city was always extremely supportive. So, you know that we're a national natural landmark, and Councilwoman Franks just mentioned that we had more than 230,000 visitors last year. We're a busy place because we have the top dinosaur track site in the country. We are the site of the first stegosaurus discovery in the world. And so, between April 25th and April 28th this year, Thursday to Sunday, we have six public events coming up. I'm going to give you 15 seconds on each of them. On Thursday night, April 25th, we have a fun and scientifically accurate commentary at the Alma Drafthouse on Jurassic Park. It is going to be a blast. On Friday day, all day, we have our scientists, a group of our scientists leading different walks of Dinosaur Ridge to really get in-depth about what is their two-hour walks from various scientists affiliated with our organization. Friday night, for our hardcore science people, we have a presentation by one of the nation's top paleontologists coming in from Ohio, Dr. Lewis Jacobs, called Sea Monsters. Sea Monsters Unearth: Life in Angola's Ancient Seas. So, that's going to get really technical. During Saturday day, we have something that's going to appeal to all the families in all of Denver metro. We have a really big Cretaceous community carnival, lots of inflatables, games, popcorn, cotton candy, a lot of it with a dino theme. And then, Saturday night, we have our 30th anniversary gala to celebrate. We're going to have our board members, lots of our supporters, and I know some of you will be there as well. Finally, on Sunday, we have a special exhibit with photographs from throughout our 30 years of people taking action to preserve what's great at Dinosaur Ridge and educating the community about it. So, there will be a big photograph exhibit, as well as a presentation centered on the spirit of volunteering, which has been just so key to our history. Volunteers founded our organization, and they continue to be the lifeblood of our organization. So, we invite council, of course, everyone here, everyone watching. We hope the whole community can come out and enjoy at least one of our six public events during that weekend. Thank you so much again for your support.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Franks, nice job reading that. Those were some big words, and you had very little practice, and you did great. I will also mention a couple of other things. The Alameda Gateway, or Alameda Connects, is going to bring out some dinosaurs. You might see them along the corridor. And our art line is anchored by three parks that all have dinosaur-themed art installations. So, you might want to get out and enjoy that in the spirit of their 30th. So, congratulations again. The clerk, please read item five.
Item five, proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Okay. I'm going to invite down Jennifer Kemp of the Ralston House to join me, please, and I'll ask Counselor Labir to read this proclamation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi. How are you?
Good. How are you? Jennifer Kemp couldn't be here tonight, but my name is Paula Torres, and I am a forensic interviewer with the Ralston House, so I am representing today.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe nurturing environment, free from harm and fear, all children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators, and it's up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end it through awareness and action. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many. And whereas the month of April has been designated nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month, at this time, we encourage all Lakewood residents to join in in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. And whereas the City of Lakewood has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs, such as the Ralston House, succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City of Lakewood and the people of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 29th as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
So, you know, this is always a special time when we have the opportunity to honor the Ralston House and all the efforts that you do. You do an incredible job, and it's unfortunate when you have a community, or when you have a community, you have to have a need for the Ralston House and to have those programs. But we, you know, certainly are here to support you and say thank you, and bring recognition and awareness to the fact that our kids sometimes are being abused. And it's a sad deal, but we have folks here to help. So, I'd like to offer you the mic if you want to talk a little bit more.
Thank you. It's an honor for me to be here with you guys. At the Ralston House, we forensically interview kids that have been victims of abuse. We provide forensic interviews, medical exams, victim advocacy. Our mission is to stop the abuse and start the healing, and it's a wonderful experience for us to be able to serve the community. And thank you to the City of Lakewood for all your support.
The clerk, please read item six.
Item six, proclamation, Autism Awareness Month.
All right. And I'm going to ask a couple of our residents to come down, Sandy Weathers and her son, Joey, and I did see Carrie Sonnenborn here. All right. Counselor Gutwin, you're going to read?
Thank you. Autism Awareness Month, April 2019. Whereas World Autism Awareness Day was April 2nd, and Autism Awareness Month is April 2019, giving us an opportunity to recognize and support all children and adults with autism spectrum disorder, ASD. Today, millions of adults and an estimated one out of every 68 children in the United States have been diagnosed with some form of ASD, and whereas notwithstanding these diagnoses, Americans with ASD make exceptional contributions across our nation and around the world. In April, we honor their accomplishments and recommit to ensuring that they enjoy the same opportunities to fulfill their potential that all residents of Lakewood and citizens throughout the world deserve. And whereas to maximize the quality of life across the entire autism spectrum, excuse me, we must ensure that ASD is accurately identified and diagnosed in both children and adults. We must also support access to effective care, critical resources, and supportive services. And whereas to further these important goals, Lakewood is proud to be home of Camp Paha, Easter Seals, and other programs that help us to continue to promote acceptance, inclusion, and understanding of children and adults with ASD. And whereas the City of Lakewood is committed to educate our community through areas, schools, libraries, churches, restaurants, offices, and other places. Everywhere, those on the autism spectrum can be truly valued for their unique personalities and talents. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019, Autism Awareness Month.
All right. Well, thank you all very much, and Sandy, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Another great honor for us to celebrate over this month, but all throughout the year. And really, we talked about inclusion and the really unique gifts that folks with autism bring to our lives and to our communities. And you see a lot of wonderful stories now about people working in different industries and just doing amazing things. So, I want to thank you. Joey, thank you for coming down. It's always nice to see you. Do you want to say something? If you'd like. If not, it's okay. Okay. All right. Do you want to say something, Joey?
Hey, can you say something? When are, when are we going to be done? We're done. When are we, uh, uh? How does that microphone work? When you talk, how does it come out of the speakers? Can you say thank you to everyone? Thank you. When you talk to the microphone, how does it come out of the speakers? How, when you talk, how does it come out of the speakers? Thank you. When you talk, how does it come out?
Joey, come on back, and we'll give you a tour here one day, and we'll show you how it all works. Next, Madam Clerk, item seven.
Item seven, proclamation, Crime Victims Rights Week.
Okay. I'm going to ask Lindsay Bravica from our Lakewood's Victim Witness Assistance Division. She's a supervisor to come join me. And Counselor Johnson's going to read this proclamation.
Proclamation, Crime Victims Rights Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2019. Whereas in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims. And whereas this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas crime can leave a lasting impact on any person, regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas incorporating communities' existing experts and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. With the unwavering support of their communities and victims' service providers behind them, survivors will be empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and hope without fear of judgment, and will feel understood, heard, and respected. And whereas serving victims and rebuilding their trust restores hope to victims and survivors as well as supports thriving communities. And whereas... And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the City of Lakewood is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victims responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, I Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 7th through the 13th, 2019 Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to just extend an invitation to both City Council members and the community to the upcoming 26th Annual Courage Walk. Every year during Crime Victim Rights Week, this is the time that we honor survivors and pay our respect to those as well that we've lost that are crime victim survivors within the community. This year, we are doing the 26th Annual Courage Walk at Jefferson County Courthouse. And it is a great time for the family and we invite everyone out. We have the mounted patrol there. We have Jefferson County Sheriff's Bloodhounds. We bring out vintage police cars and do a lot of stuff for the kids. Then we have our walk where we honor our victims. And we also do a dove release. So we welcome anybody that wants to support the community to that. And that will be this Saturday, April 13th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Jefferson County Courthouse. Thank you.
And I just want to echo and thank you and your team. Unfortunately, you touch people in kind of their most challenging times and see a lot of the stuff that most folks don't see, and you help those folks through. So thank you for your kindness and compassion to those in need. Thank you. All right, so normally, we don't have that many proclamations, but we haven't had a lot of time and it was nice to be able to do some of those. So again, thank you to all the folks who are here tonight for those. And the council members who read them have been being asked about an hour ago to tune into those. So, will the clerk please read item 10?
About item eight.
Yep, item eight, looks good too.
Resolution 2019-13, reappointing a member to the Lakewood Board of Appeals.
So I will turn this over to the Chair of the Screening Committee, Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Now, I'm new to this, so we go through one at a time and just kind of recognize. So this resolution is for reappointing a member to the Lakewood Board of Appeals. And I believe Donaldo Visani is in the audience, so if you could stand up to be recognized. Thank you.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-13.
So, second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. 10 ayes, 0 nays. Congratulations. Clerk, please read item nine.
Item nine, Resolution 2019-14, appointing and reappointing members to the Lakewood Historic Preservation Commission.
And I believe we have Jessica Pierce in the audience. And so if I can ask her to stand if she is indeed here, Jessica. And we also had Rebecca Silva, who is not here. And just wanted to say, we really, on this, on all of our boards and commissions, but especially this, we get folks who are, it's just amazing how much they know and how much they value the historic preservation. So these are, this is one of the funnest committees to sit on.
Thank you for serving. Appreciate it. And I think I might know how the vote's going to go.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-14.
I second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Congratulations, 10 ayes, 0 nays.
Item 10, Resolution 2019-15, appointing and reappointing members to the Lakewood Advisory Commission.
And we have several folks here. Not all of them are able to stand, but as I call your name if you're here, Roberto Gerza, Michelle Rosebrook, Selena Bashira, and John Stamps, Casey Hensley, Lawrence Lieber, and Nicole Malandri.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-15.
I second.
Motion and second. Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. Item 11, please.
Item 11, Resolution 2019-16, appointing a member to the Lakewood Planning Commission.
And this appointment is for the position that was open for Ward Four, Alan Heald. I believe you're here in the audience. If you could stand?
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-16.
I second.
Second. Motion and second. Cast your votes. 10 ayes, 0 nays.
And item 12, Resolution 2019-17, appointing members to the Lakewood Victim Assistance Compensation Board.
And I don't believe Margaret Cass was able to be here tonight, but we also have Stefan Hall. And Stefan, if you could go ahead and stand?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-17.
I second.
Motion and second. Please cast your votes. All right. Well, well done. Thank you to all of our volunteers, all the folks willing to step up and give back to your community. We appreciate your service and look forward to working with you as we move forward. Madam Clerk, items 13 and 14?
I'll try to explain 13 and 14 without going too, back in two years of history. But this is the first time I've been able to bring forward the citizen initiative to you and have you act on it. So tonight, you'll see on your agenda that you may vote, according to our charter, you may vote in favor, and hopefully, our city attorney will help me if I get this wrong, but you can vote in favor and adopt the citizen-initiated ordinance as presented, as is. Or you can go to the following item and call a special election, which I am asking for a special election, if that's your choice, to be held on July 2nd as a mail ballot election.
Thank you. So for further clarification, you'd probably need to go through one to get to the other, or?
If you choose one, you get to go to round two, depending on the outcome of round one. That's if you choose to vote on it, because what's important is that a council can vote on it without any change. And if it's adopted, it's adopted. It becomes an ordinance of the city. If you choose to vote on it and it does not pass with a majority vote, you still then must refer it to the voters. It's not the end of the story if the council doesn't adopt it. And so if you choose not to vote, you can simply send the matter to the voters directly without the council voting in the first instance.
Mayor, let's see here, Counselor Harrison?
So just to confirm, to make sure that I understand, if I voted no on the first item, that doesn't mean that I don't support it or oppose it. It just means I want the opportunity to send it to ballot. So all the voters of Lakewood would be able to vote, correct?
Correct. The first decision to be made is, does the council want to vote on it at all? If you do not, then you don't have to take that step. You can simply adopt the resolution.
Mayor Protam, did you want to add anything else, or?
I think we should probably vote on item 13. And if and when it's rejected, then we will make a motion on item 14. And I think that'll just make it a cleaner, no consensus kind of thing, just to vote.
That's fine.
Great. Okay, so I will now open the public hearing then on item 13. And for those of you that are familiar, most of you look familiar in the audience, but you have three minutes. So the box here will be two and a half, will be green for two and a half. Your last 30 seconds will go yellow. When your time's up, it'll go red. I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. We do have a long night, although not a lot of folks have signed up to speak to this. But instead of having redundancy, if you want to disagree with the speaker before you, go ahead and indicate that and we'll make sure that the record knows that. So first up, I have Ruth Burns. And then I have Lynn Judson, Linnea Hauser, Russell, and Terry. I'm afraid I can't read the last name. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Burns. I am a resident in Two Creeks, which is the neighborhood where you've got a whole bunch of development going on. My mother owns the house and I live with her. We're right on the northeast corner of 11th and Harlan. So we are literally smack dab in the middle of all the new development. So this is an initiative that I was really very gratified to see, to be honest with you. I was going to come down here tonight and I was going to talk to you about pretty much everything that initiative says, why it's such a bad idea to allow this unrestrained development in our city, and why it's going to damage so many residents because it's going to destroy the character of these old neighborhoods that have been here forever, and how it's going to, you know, so burden the infrastructure. And all this stuff has been addressed in that initiative. So that initiative is actually picking up on all the concerns that I, as a citizen, have as somebody who's living in the middle of all this development. And it seems like they're addressing a lot of the concerns that I'm noticing a lot of other folks seem to have with regard to the changes to the zoning in the city and the development in other areas besides Two Creeks. So I wanted to, I'm not going to bore you with that, but I did want to at least bring up one or two points that maybe you haven't considered, sort of along these lines, that might make a difference to the way you decide to vote on this or not. I'd really like to see you decide to vote on it and adopt it rather than putting it forth for an election, because an election is, for one thing, going to cost $300,000 of taxpayer money that I can think of better things to do with. For another thing, it's also going to have people voting on this, you know, who are city residents but who are not living in these areas that are actually having the development and who maybe are not necessarily going to be conversant with all of the actual issues that are going to come up. So I'd like to see that be avoided if we could. A couple of things that you might want to think about just in making the decision. As far as all this unrestrained development, Colorado is a boom and bust economy. It always has been, it always will be. Right now, we are booming. We've got lots of money, lots of people coming here, and we want all these apartments. Five years from now, that may very well not be the case. So if you destroy all these charming old neighborhoods that are tucked away and have all this great character but are the property of low-income or moderate-income people who can't stand up against these big developers, then five years from now, you may have destroyed these old neighborhoods for buildings that are going to sit there vacant and degrade and just degrade the property values for everything. So you really want to think about that. You don't want to gentrify the neighborhoods and push out the homeless and push out these low and moderate income people. And you do want to consider the possibility for bad publicity if this actually goes like to a ballot as opposed to City Council being able to just make a decision and do the right thing. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Lynn, and then Linnea, and then I'm sorry, Russell and Terry, you do not wish to speak, but you support the question. And Linnea, you'll be next if you want to get ready. Thanks.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I think you may understand the background of this Strategic Growth Initiative. We do want growth, but we want some limits on growth. And so many citizens supported this. But I think what's important is that this is a reaction to some of the recent, what we feel is overbuilding, too much building, too much density, too much so that we have to impose some limits in order to have quality of life here and to have sufficient water supply. Our schools are overcrowded and our roads are very much overcrowded. And we don't want to have a Lakewood that the quality of Lakewood living goes down. So it's a reaction to the overbuilding, one example being the Beacon, of course, on Union. We believe that, I believe the initiative states that there's been closer to 5% growth, maybe 4%. And I wanted to consult Margie Greer. How many citizen signatures? Do you recall how many we had on the Strategic Growth Initiative?
I apologize. I think it's in...
I caught her without preparation. I didn't ask her ahead of time.
We'll just keep the comments this way and then she can try to dig that up.
All right, but I do want to point out that there was massive citizen support for this. I know because I worked on it door-to-door and nearly everyone signed it that I went to on Green Mountain. So I think there's overwhelming support for it. And I would urge council to adopt it, this initiative, in order to save some costs when it goes on the ballot, which are significant. But I believe there's great support and that we should not overbuild, I believe, in some building. But the idea is to make it quality building. And when it's a large project, to have City Council be able to voice whether they believe this is a good project. And that would also give citizens an opportunity to comment on the projects before they're approved. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I do have that number. We had 6,192 acceptable valid signatures.
Thank you.
Which is sufficient to put it on the ballot. More than sufficient. Thank you.
And if you did not sign up to speak on this, please come down and sign up with Ms. Greer.
Good evening, Council. I find that my thoughts were stated by Lynn very well, but I just want to agree with her that your vote to approve the petition is warranted. Over 6,000 people said that they want a growth initiative. I don't know that it's necessary to put it to the vote of the citizens and incur the expense and the time. I would urge you to vote to approve the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Skatner? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Excuse me. Well, I'm glad council is finally addressing this after nearly two years. Nearly two years that Lakewood residents have been unfairly denied the right to vote on a grassroots initiative. Instead, it has been withheld from its rightful place on the ballot by a district court case that a judge says has no merit. Because of that, the community's right to vote on an issue that weighs heavily in the city was thwarted and delayed. As co-petitioner, representing the thousands of registered voters who signed petitions supporting the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative, I urge you to do now what should have been done over 18 months ago, to put this to a vote of the people. The people you represent, your constituents, the people of Lakewood. The Strategic Growth Initiative is the result of our years-long effort to persuade our city government to mitigate the surprisingly unexpected consequences of our zoning ordinance, such as lack of green space and unhealthy densities. Recent Denver Post articles also referenced gentrification and the detrimental effects on affordable housing caused by too many high-density luxury apartment buildings such as we see here in Lakewood. But the Strategic Growth Initiative requires affordable housing. It is inclusive in that it limits the effects of unfettered gentrification. It pres... is inclusive, in that it limits the effects of unfettered gentrification. It preserves green spaces, and it is sustainable, both economically and environmentally. The Strategic Growth Initiative, as mentioned, also returns to you decisions that the city council should be making, decisions which are now in the hands of an administrative employee. Again, in case you didn't hear me the first time, I urge you to put the Strategic Growth Initiative on the ballot, so the members of our community can finally express their vision for our city's future.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll close public comment. Oh, yeah, sure, please. If you wouldn't mind, on your way, when you're done, just check in with the clerk so we can get your information. Welcome.
I'm Kristen Armstrong, and I have to say, I think this should definitely be put up for a vote, if at all possible. But on top of this, I think 1% growth is just, it's too small. And I come from a city of Sunnyvale, California, I've lived in Boulder, Colorado, and I'll tell you right now, it all sounds great on paper, but it doesn't allow anybody in my age range to be able to actually afford housing, at all. I mean, you're stifled, and you'll end up just renting endlessly. And I don't understand, if everyone's given this chance, when you were younger, to have affordable housing, why isn't my generation given the same chance? So by stifling the growth in this community, you're basically stifling my growth as a potential millennial. And I really think this should be put up for everyone to be able to vote their opinion on this situation. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I will now close public comment. I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of the citizen-initiated ordinance.
Is there a second? Thank you. There's a motion and a second, council discussion, Councilor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I did want to make sure that folks knew that of those 6,000 signatures, many people reached out and said that they weren't sure whether they were in support of it, or were they going to be opposed to it. They really wanted to dig in and read all the contents, and so there, I don't know that the 6,000 represents people who were going to vote yes for it, I just know there are people who wanted it on the ballot, and I certainly think that is fair. I did want to speak also to the cost aspect, and maybe we can get some other folks maybe to weigh in, but when this was brought forth, it could have made, it's like two elections that we've missed, where we could have been on the coordinated ballot, because it came up for legal challenge. So it is unfortunate that the costs are higher when you have to do a special election and go it alone, but the petitioners did bring it forth in time to get it on a coordinated ballot, that just unfortunately didn't work out. And to the woman who spoke about the 1%, I think that the city provided some numbers on that, as far as historic, and I think there's only been a couple times, and we'll certainly get the data up there, where we've exceeded that, and that's been in unique circumstances. So while the 1%, I think it's just important to know that the data's going to be important for the community to consume, and make sure that you're making your decision based on good, solid data, rather than maybe a number sounding low, and maybe it not really, in our historical view, being low. So just really wanted to throw all that out there, and say that I certainly will be in support of it going to the ballot. I think that's what the community's asked for.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Abel?
I like it when people vote to tell us what they want and how they want it. This initiative will reflect the vision of our community, the vision of itself, and where they want to go in the future, whether it is rejected or adopted. But I believe it is an exercise in community involvement and direct democracy, and I certainly want to put this to a vote. Thank you.
Counselor Bita? Oh, I just locked you out, there you go.
I just want to make sure it's clear. So on the motion that's before us, if we vote no, if there's a no vote on it, that would automatically then send it to the ballot. Is that not right?
Mr. Cox?
Right, there'll be action taken to put the matter on the ballot. Automatic is not quite the right word. To reject this ordinance, your next action will be to place it on the special election ballot.
Okay, so let me ask a question. Why would we take action to do that, when that's the only other choice we have as a matter of law under our charter? It seems to me, by saying no, we are choosing the second alternative.
It's different actions, and so we just want to make sure that there's a clear record, that the council is sending it to the voters, it sets the date of the election as well, that's part of the action, so. Thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion, and Counselor Gutwin?
I was expecting there to be more lights on the board there. So I will also be supporting, putting this to a vote of the people, and I wanted to just say that I think that no matter what happens tonight, growth is one of the most important issues that we are going to address as a community. It's probably been the greatest topic of conversation, both in this room and at our ward meetings, and so we certainly have experienced some successes and some benefits as a result of economic growth, but we've also certainly experienced some real challenges that we all feel in our everyday life. And I think that, you know, we've really made a big effort to come together and address those challenges, and I too share some concerns about this, how a growth cap would impact our community in terms of being able to afford to live here. An example that I look at is Boulder, and, you know, where virtually a middle-class essentially can't afford to live there anymore. And so, you know, yes, we have to address growth, and I believe we can do that together. And that said, I also really believe that the right to petition your government is a fundamental, important aspect of democracy, and so I will be proudly supporting sending this to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Just to be clear, yes vote would be for council adoption, and then no vote would then send us to our next item, which is a resolution. And for those in the audience, these things are very rare, in that I don't think we've seen a referred measure in probably a decade plus, so bear with us. So motion and a second, please cast your votes. That fails. One eye, nine nays, the nays being Paul, Gutwin, Skilling, Labir, Abel, Bita, Johnson, Franks, and Harrison. The clerk, please read item 14.
Item 14, Resolution 2019-18, calling a special municipal election for July 2, 2019, to be conducted as a mail ballot election.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-18.
Is there a second?
I second.
Counselor Franks, discussion?
I just had a question related to the July 2. I do know it's going to be a mail-in ballot, and that's been something that folks were, you know, that's how we do ours, but I just wanted to understand, how much time does that give folks? Because again, with it being, you know, right around the holiday, how soon do those ballots drop? So is it like mid-June, they drop, and people get a couple weeks to fill out their ballots? I just want to be sure that if we're scheduling it for a July 2, that people have ample time around that holiday.
The mail ballots are sent out approximately, and I don't have the exact calendar in front of me, but I think it's 16 to 21 days prior to the election.
Great. Just wanted to allay people's fears, who had plans for the holiday, so when that thing comes in the mail, it's one question, and so shouldn't take a lot of time, but there will be, I'm sure, a lot of material out there on both sides, that people can educate themselves in advance to be ready to cast that. So that's ample time.
Mayor Pro Tem, Abel?
I believe that date is prescribed by charter. That is, that gives you ample time for your staff to prepare everything, get the mail ballots out in coordination with the county, and that we really couldn't go a lot earlier because of the workload, and couldn't go any later because of the charter.
I always ask for the latest date possible, to give us the most time. Our charter and our ordinance says that from the time you call the special election, or today, when I bring you that initiative petition forward, you have to set the election date not less than 30, and not more than 90 days from tonight. So that July 2 date was kind of our further state out, to give us enough time to, I mean, we have to contract with, you know, printers and the mailing houses and that sort of thing, so it takes quite a while.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and nobody had indicated a desire to speak on this. Is there, you want to speak on it? Okay. So I'm gonna just ask for a withdrawal of the motion and the second. Counselor Johnson, will you withdraw your second, the motion?
It's withdrawn.
I withdraw the motion for the moment.
All right. Ms. Kentner, come on down. Anybody else wish to speak on this resolution? If so, please see the clerk.
One thing I took out of my last comments, but it seems appropriate, is to mention that in Golden, rents actually went down, which is what this initiative's modeled after, and Golden has a little less than 1% limit. So I'm here to address specifically the election, and the timing of the election, which was mentioned. Nearly two years ago, Lakewood community members began collecting signatures to vote on an issue that weighs heavily in our community. The Strategic Growth Initiative was timed to be on the November 2017 ballot, and our grassroots group went out of our way to ensure that. Six weeks into our signature gathering, I received this email from our city clerk, informing me that if we wanted to qualify for the November ballot, and not cost our city a lot of money, then we would have to turn in our signatures two weeks earlier than allowed by our charter. We chose to save our city the money and qualify for the November 2017 ballot, and sacrificed what was likely thousands more signatures to turn in the petition two weeks earlier than our charter allows, to qualify for the November 2017 ballot. We were also given the option instead to continue gathering signatures, and we could qualify for a special election, which would cost our city a lot of money. We chose to qualify for the November 2017 ballot. The 18-month delay in getting this to the voters is due to a lawsuit, which a judge has said has no merit. The cost of this special election, plus nearly $100,000 in legal fees to the city, and $50,000 to small community members, like myself, a teacher, is due to a lawsuit, a lawsuit which a judge says has no merit, a lawsuit recruited by Mayor Adam Paul, a lawsuit recruited simply to keep us from voting. Thank you tonight, and I apologize that this has to be a special election, when our grassroots group went out of our way to ensure this could be on the November 2017 ballot. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll re-engage with a motion, please.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-18.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. All right, that passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. Thank you. Ms. Hodson, executive report?
Yes, thank you. So I have a couple of interesting notes of, notes to visit about. First of all, the Lakewood Kiwanis will be presenting a donation check of $10,000 to the mayor on April 19, at 3:00 PM. And the purpose of this is, it's a fundraising effort for a new playground at the visitor's center at Bear Creek Lake Park, and it's called Exploration Ridge. Several of the new play area structures are complete, and they include a bear sculpture that is climbable, a flagstone maze, and a gazebo with a sand pit to be installed this summer. So that's going to be a really nice addition over at the visitor's center at Bear Creek Lake Park. And please mark your calendars for May 9. May 9 is the National Veterans Creative Arts Festival, which is returning to Lakewood, and it'll be held at the cultural center from 1 to 3. Again, it's the National Veterans Creative Arts Festival, it's returning to Lakewood, and it's scheduled for Thursday, May 9, and we'd love to see you there. Did you know that at the Mills Mall, we now will be, we will see a store that's an Under Armour store, and a Ralph Lauren store at Mills Mall? So go shop in there, that sounds good to me. The lodging license took effect on Saturday, so the city clerk staff is working really hard to start licensing ASAP those lodgers. Last week, you had a tour of the shops, did you enjoy that tour of the shops? We will be having a follow-up study session to talk more specifically about all of the details related to a potential relocation, what that's going to cost, what those, what all those logistics are. And we'll have a presentation from our public works director, Jay Hutchison, as well as our finance director, Larry Dorr, to talk about some of those funding options. That hasn't been scheduled yet, but while that tour is fresh in your memory, we're going to do that in the next several weeks. Finally, you have a city manager annual report pretty soon, or annual review, and that is held on my favorite day of the year, which is April 22. You, in your boxes right now, the annual report, I just finished it, and it's in your boxes today, and it's hard copy, so please take that and review it. And then the evaluation instrument will be sent to you, I think, in the next couple of days. And our HR director, Jeff Dolan, is coordinating that, so you're, you need to turn that back into him. And then again, we have the executive session on my review on April 22. So if you have any questions, please contact our human resource director, Jeff Dolan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hodson. Before we go into the consent agenda, I'm going to go ahead and bump item 28 up, and Mr. Ware will go ahead and, since it doesn't look like there's any presentation or any comment, there may be a question or two. So Madam, Madam Gre, clerk, will you please read item 28?
Item 28, Ordinance 02019-16, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $100,000 to the 2019 fiscal year to fund Porchlight, a family justice center.
Thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing on this. Nobody's indicated a desire to speak on the Porchlight project. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Mayor Pro Tem, Abel?
We have heard a lot about this project, all of it good. It is a real bonus for our, for people involved in the family justice system, and it is hard to go wrong with a yes vote on this one.
So with that, will you please make a motion?
Item 28. I move for the adoption of Ordinance 02019-16.
I proudly second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I'll just say, we had a briefing on this, it's a family justice center. If you'd like to learn more, you can go to porchlightproject.com.org.
FJC.
Okay, porchlightfjc.org. And this is a community effort sponsored, and being supported through all the cities and the county to bring this forward. I want to thank the district attorney's staff for really spearheading this. It'll be unique, and it'll be a great way to help bring better service to, again, we heard a lot tonight about folks who are in need, and sometimes the folks that are going to be going to this place are going through... be going to this place are going through some of the most challenging times in their life. So I will gladly support. Motion and a second. Any more discussion, please cast your votes. And that passes ten ayes, zero nays. Thank you. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Mayor, I believe we passed general public comment.
Oh, certainly we did. I'm all discombobulated. I have two scripts going, so. So now, now is the time for public comment, general public comment. So this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask that all in attendance observe the decorum of City Council chambers and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with the speaker. Again, there's a three-minute time limit, two and a half minutes green, 30 seconds yellow, and when your time's up, it'll be red. So Liz, are you gonna pool with, so you have Laura, you have, is everybody here? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? Okay, but is everybody here that's on your list? Okay. All right, come on down. Yeah. So Liz, you're gonna be speaking. Did you, do you know if you double signed up or did you just sign up on this?
I just signed up on one, thank you.
Same with the whole crew?
Yes, I think so.
All right, well, we'll get through it. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paul and council representatives. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the redevelopment of White Fence Farm. I'm a part of a neighborhood HOA group that has discussions about the property, and we felt that it might be beneficial to give you an overview in case you have the opportunity to meet with the developer at some time. In February, Crescent Communities, the developer looking to purchase the White Fence Farm restaurant site, and the Public Relations Group associated with them, CRL Associates, invited a few of the surrounding HOAs to attend a meeting to give an overview of what was being planned at White Fence Farm. That meeting was held in the barn at White Fence Farm with wall-to-wall City of Lakewood residents in attendance. They didn't have to offer to meet with the community, and as you can imagine, it was, it was a quiet, wasn't a quiet meeting due to the fact that so many of these residents were going to be impacted by what was being suggested to be built on this property. Two four-story buildings to house 260-unit apartment complex, and at that time consisted of studio, one and two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units to be determined. At the end of that meeting, the representative from Crescent Communities, Ben Collins, offered to meet at a different time to further discuss their plans. So as a result of that February 4th meeting, 11 neighboring HOAs formed a group of some, and some of which are here this evening. Many of us had never met before, but we thought it might be more productive if we all came together voicing our concerns in that many were one and the same issues. Those 11 HOAs included 972 homes near the White Fence Farm property. Everyone acknowledged the fact that there will eventually be some development on that site at some point. We contacted Crescent Communities and CRL, and they both were gracious enough to meet with the representatives of those 11 HOAs. We met on March 6th. There were copious note-taking within the room, including Crescent Communities and CRL, because needless to say, we are all impacted by what was being proposed with high-density buildings that we are told will be built and sold. It's important that you realize that we're all for growth in Lakewood. However, it must be conscientious growth that's copacetic within the neighborhoods. With the help from Mary Ann Valeska for questions regarding traffic monitoring, and Kara Mueller in planning, who always is available to direct us or field numerous questions, no matter what the subject might be. And now, with this development, we have contacted them both again with rapid responses to questions. Kara was asked to attend Ward Three meeting by our Ward Three Councilman, where she presented that timeline, what that timeline looked like for this development, when that application was received, to a packed room of Ward Three residents. Why don't envy the position that Kara's in, as she's following the rules that have been set forth by the Planning Commission, and we're most certain that she must be inundated with many calls and emails with the growth in City of Lakewood. The site plan now has been submitted to the city for review, and although the number of units have changed from 260 to 234, it still does not address the fact that the intention is to build two four-story high-density buildings. In order to make this financially feasible, we are told that this is what the project will require. Crescent Communities will be meeting with our neighborhood group, HOAs, again, on the 16th of this month to go over the issues that were brought to their attention that included density, parking, traffic, environmental issues, along with a list of much, much more. Again, we realize that they're not required to do this, but we are hopeful that there might be some resolution with what we requested of them. Might there be an opportunity to address proposed development by looking at its implications so that the final product actually fits into what is currently built there? We're reminded that the City of Lakewood is suburban, not a Denver urban scenario, and should be treated as such. Our Ward Three Councilman Mike Bida has taken time on occasion to offer help where he was able, along with valuable suggestions. Also, thank you to those currently on City Council who are attuned to, lent an air to, and have shared similar thoughts as many residents throughout Lakewood, who are expressing the effects of the growth throughout Colorado in relation to the City of Lakewood. We're very appreciative of both the Strategic Growth Initiative that was begun about a year and a half ago, and your newly formed Parking Study Session members, who are working diligently to sort out the neighborhood parking issues. They may not impact what currently is being looked at and proposed for White Fence Farm, but they will certainly impact future developments. Thank you.
Liz, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mike, you're gonna represent Phase Two? All right, come on down. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and Honorable Members of Council, good evening. My name is Mike Beery. My partner Robbie and I own a patio home that is part of the Wildflower Patio Homes, which are located right behind the White Fence Farm Restaurant Site. I'm also on the Wildflower Patio Homes HOA Committee that was formed to review the apartment development, and I've been actively involved in the joint HOA Committee that Liz mentioned. I grew up here in Lakewood, went to Patterson Elementary School, from kindergarten on, O'Connell Middle School, and graduated from Alameda High School in 1979. I also am a graduate of Fort Lewis College in Durango, Colorado, and DU Law School. I am an attorney, but while I am an attorney, I'm not representing one in that capacity in this matter. Tonight, I would like to address a concern we have about a number, about the number of dwelling units and density shown on the site plan submitted by the apartment developer, developer to the city's planning department. The site plan submitted by the developer shows 234 apartment units for the site. In this presentation, I will describe the applicable zoning for the restaurant site. I will also provide details about the official development plan, commonly referred to as an ODP. You're gonna hear me say ODP a few times here, that applies to the site. Finally, I will show you how the developers' proposed 234 apartment units are inconsistent with the ODP for the White Fence Farm neighborhood. Because I get a little nervous when I public, when I do public speaking, I have prepared a handout, and you should all have copies of it. It is entitled, "April 8th, 2019, City Council Meeting, Presentation Concerning Maximum Dwelling Units and Density." I have extra copies if you don't have one.
I think we're set.
Okay, good. I'll start on page one by discussing the zoning for the White Fence Restaurant Site. The White Fence Restaurants, White Fence Farm Restaurant Site is governed by an ODP, an official development plan. The ODP was approved by Lakewood City Council and signed by the mayor in 1982. Zoning is PD/MNS, which is Plan Development slash Mixed-Use Neighborhood Suburban, and that zoning is as a result of the 2012 remapping. The ODP covers the restaurant site, Wildflower Patio Homes, Carmel Oaks Retirement Community, Summerfield Town Homes, Country Manor Single Family Homes Gated Community, and Wilson Family Park, which is owned by the city. The parties to the ODP are the City of Lakewood and the property owners in the ODP area as successors to the original property owners. The ODP can be enforced by the City of Lakewood and the property owners in the ODP area as successors to the original property owners. The ODP is binding upon any person who undertakes development of the property in the ODP area. The ODP includes specific standards limiting the number of dwelling units and density for the area covered by the ODP. The developers' plan for 234 apartment units exceeds the specific standards set forth in the ODP for the maximum number of dwelling units and density. A copy of the current zoning map, taken from the city's webpage, is on page two, and you will see the restaurant site is the second from the left there. It is our communities surround the site, Carmel Oaks Retirement Community to the left, Wildflower Patio Homes behind, Summerfield Town Homes to the right there, and, and Country Manor to the north and east. Jewel is at the bottom. On page three, I will show you the number of dwelling units and density allowed for this area per the ODP for this neighborhood. Zoning Ordinance Section 17.3.6.3 discusses the topic of official development plans and says, "All PD Zone Districts," and you'll remember from the zoning map, are, this is a PD Zone District, it's one PD Zone District, "shall be governed by an ODP. The ODP shall contain written stipulations addressing density." And the ODP for the White Fence Restaurant, White Fence Farm Restaurant Site does address density. I have cut and pasted and copied that for you into my presentation. As you can see from the bottom, the maximum dwelling units for the White Fence Farm ODP area are 380 dwelling units, or 4.75 dwelling units per acre. That's the total maximum density for this area. On page four, I will discuss how the developers' plan for 234 apartment units is inconsistent with these standards. Per the ODP, again, the maximum number of dwelling units for the White Fence Farm area is 380 dwelling units. The developers' plan for 234 apartment units exceeds the maximum dwelling units by 83 dwelling units. So it's simple math here, you can look, maximum dwelling units allowed by the ODP are 380, and then you look at what is currently existing in the neighborhood between Wildflower Patio Homes, Carmel Oaks, Summerfield Town Homes, and Country Manor Homes. Those are 229 units. Subtracting 229 from the 380 results in 151 available units to be built in this ODP area. Obviously, if you subtract 234 of the developers' plan, subtract 151 from the developers' 234 dwelling unit plan, that is 83 dwelling units more than can be accommodated per the ODP. And if you'll notice, the developers' plan for 234 dwelling units more than doubles the number of dwelling units in this neighborhood. Per the ODP, the maximum density, the number of dwelling units per acre is 4.75 dwelling units, and the developers' plan for 234 apartment units would result in a density calculation of 5.79, and that exceeds the density limitations allowed by the ODP. In conclusion, as property owners, we relied in good faith on the maximum dwelling unit and density standards in the ODP when we purchased our individual properties. We believed that these standards would protect the character, character of our neighborhood, that our quiet neighborhood wouldn't have the noise, traffic, parking, and other problems associated with higher-density neighborhoods. Allowing the four-story, 234-unit apartment buildings, and there are two of them, to be built on the White Fence Farm Restaurant Site would more than double the number of dwelling units in our neighborhood in direct violation of the ODP that was approved by City Council. This would be like pulling the rug out from under us. It would completely change the character of our neighborhood. The maximum dwelling unit and densities, density standards set forth in the ODP are binding upon the developer of the White Fence Farm Restaurant Site. Per the ODP, these standards can be enforced by the City of Lakewood and the property owners of the White Fence Farm neighborhood. As property owners, we ask the developers' site plan for the White Fence Farm Restaurant Site be denied in its current form based on the maximum dwelling unit and density standards set forth in the City Council-approved ODP. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Nice job.
I do have copies of the ODP, if anyone wants one.
You can, if you want to leave them with the clerk, that's fine. Ms. Emmer? How are you? Come on down. And you're speaking for, I can't read the writing, Greg, Karen?
Yeah, Greg Con.
Okay? And Nancy Bechtel.
And Nancy Shepherd.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Deborah Easly Emmert, and I'm a resident of the City of Lakewood residing at 6028 West Colorado Lane in the Summerfield Town Homes, which is part of the Wilson property. I've been a resident here for the past four and a half years after a 30-year absence from Colorado, though I am a Colorado native and a graduate of Bear Creek High School. As noted by the previous presenter, the Wilson property is governed by an official development plan, which was approved by the City of Lakewood Council and signed by the mayor in 1982. You should also have a packet from me that will follow through, and this really builds on what Mr. Beery just presented. The Wilson Property ODP includes specific height restrictions by parcel. The White Fence Farm Restaurant property is parcel H in this ODP. As defined in the Architectural Character Section of the ODP, quote, "The commercial business parcel H will have compatible architecture throughout the total area. Maximum height of buildings will not exceed 42 feet," end quote. And, quote, "All architectural plans will be approved by an Architectural Review Committee of the Property Owners Association. Architecture will be closely coordinated between areas within land uses and also between separate land-use parcels," end quote. The purpose, the proposed multifamily apartment development, as submitted to the City of Lakewood and posted on March 26th, reflects a planned height of 53 foot 10 inches for Building One and 52 feet 4 inches for Building Two. These proposed heights exceed that allowable by the ODP for this parcel by over 10 feet. Section 17 dot 3 dot 6 dot 5 of the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance states that the ordinance applies to a planned development unless it is specifically modified as part of the PD. Based on the fact that our ODP limits the height for this parcel to 42 feet, it should be enforced as such. Section 17 dot 3 dot 6 dot 5 of Lakewood Zoning Ordinance further states that where an ODP contains specific provisions regarding the ODP modification process, the provisions outlined in the ODP shall be used to modify the ODP. The Wilson Property ODP states that any change shall be, quote, "consistent with the content and intent of this official ODP," sorry, official development plan as it has been approved by the Lakewood City Council," end quote. A building height which exceeds 10 feet greater than that defined in the ODP does not follow the intent of the ODP to provide a consistent and cohesive neighborhood. The sections of the zoning ordinance are included for your reference. The developer is attempting to use a clause in the, in the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance, adopted January 25th, 2015, which states that it may, may allow for increased development height of 12 feet if a LEED scorecard is submitted along with proof of LEED registration. And just for reference, LEED is Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It's a program that is governed, governed by the U.S. Green Building Council, and it's one of the most widely-used green building rating systems in the world. It's felt that a height, any height increase is not, is not consistent with the intent of the ODP, which was approved by the Lakewood City Council. The ODP states that, quote, "The conditions, provisions, restrictions, and regulations contained herein shall inure to the benefit of the owners, their successors, heirs, representatives, and assigns, and shall inure to the benefit of and be binding upon any person who shall undertake development of the property," end quote. Of note, and of possible concern to the city, is that there may be a loophole in this -- Of note, and of possible concern to the city, is that there may be a loophole in this section of the zoning ordinance. Although a LEED scorecard and proof of LEED registration is required in order to be granted the additional height, or another provision is to allow tax credits for low-income housing, the actual certification of a building attempting to achieve LEED certification of any level is not granted until after the completion and commissioning of the project and after all papers and documents are submitted to US GBC and CBCI, GBCI, for approval. What are the consequences if a project is granted the additional height provision by the city of Lakewood but then does not actually achieve the LEED gold certification? At this point, the building is already completed. There appears to be no consequence. It is not likely that they will be made to tear the building down after the fact. The housing, the existing housing on both the east and the north sides of parcel H are a maximum height of 35 feet in accordance with the ODP. Carmel Oaks, which is three stories tall, is to the west, and it does not exceed the 45-feet restriction for that parcel in accordance with the ODP. The proposed structures of 52 feet plus in height are not in keeping with either zoning ordinance or the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Together, a comprehensive plan, in terms of the city's desire to preserve existing neighborhood integrity. Section 17 dot 5 dot 3 dot 4 of the zoning ordinance and goal LN2 of the comprehensive plan both referred to the need for new adjacent developments to be compatible by incorporating appropriate design, scale, and height transition. The Land Use Vision Map 3 dot 21 in the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Together shows parcel H in the Wilson Property ODP as a neighborhood activity area, not a growth area. And this project, as proposed by the developer, is not in keeping with the city's stated In conclusion, the maximum height for the White Fence Farm Restaurant parcel is set forth by the city of Lakewood. Approved original development plan is 42 feet. This should be maintained in accordance with the provisions of this ODP. Allowing a four-story building on this site would be in direct violation of the ODP for this planned development. What is the point of having planned developments if their conditions are not being upheld? In all probability, this developer is using the zoning provision to gain additional building height, not for the purpose of providing a greener project, which I believe was the city's intent, but rather to maximize dwelling units on the site for financial gain. And they've indicated that they will most likely sell this project prior to or shortly after its completion. We, as homeowners, relied on the restrictions of the Wilson Property ODP when purchasing our individual properties, believing that its restrictions would preserve our neighborhood and its character, along with our property values. We ask that the city of Lakewood enforce the height restriction as set forth in the official development plan and deny the developer's proposed site plan as submitted. We know that new development and redevelopment is crucial to the growth of our city of Lakewood, but it should not be at the expense of existing neighborhoods or its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Apple, do you have general public comment? Are you here to speak on one of the agenda items?
I was under the impression that we were going to speak on the annexations item.
Yeah, we are. Well, general public comments for anything that's not on the agenda, so I'll put you down to speak on the agenda. Is it Arlene Mele? Come on down. And then I have 1542 South Yank Street. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. And then Mr. Dittson. Good evening, welcome.
I'm a little shorter.
This should pull down for you.
It's okay. Thank you, Mayor and Committee Counsel. I am here for something other than what has been spoken about. I own a skincare college, and I have applied for a permit. And when I went to apply for the permit, I just bought this building knowing that it was zoned for a school, finding out that it wasn't after I purchased it. Before I purchased the building at 1350 Independent Street, it's a three-story building, it's been there since 1980, my real estate agent sent an email to the listing billator, asked if the building was zoned for a beauty college, which I'm not, I'm a skincare college. The agent sent an email to the listing billator, and he received the answer assuring him it was zoned for a beauty college. I have this email as proof. I have never purchased a building before this one, felt that I could rely on the professionals to advise me. That is what they have a license for and get paid for. I was also shown this building a year ago, and that company also said it was zoned for my purposes. I was recently notified upon applying for a permit that the building is zoned for a school, not a trade school, vocational school, or beauty school, only K-1 through 12, of which there is one right across the street. I have 124 students, 23 staff that will be affected by the zoning mistake. As background, I am a nationally accredited college and licensed by the Division of Private Occupational Schools, of which I have served as a board member since 2012, meaning an FBI check was performed by the state of Colorado to allow me to serve as appointed by the governor. I have been in the school business since 1980, have opened and accredited three colleges in Arizona, two in California, and 19 in Texas. I am not new to this industry. My students and staff are tax-paying decent people who have contributed greatly to the community. The students spend money at restaurants for meals, shopping, and gas. The college teaches students skincare, facials, waxing, laser, injectables, permanent makeup, body treatments, and prepares them for taking their state licensing examination, of which we have 100% pass rate. We have students come from all over the United States because of our reputation of excellence, and without the proper zoning, the college would have to close. Because the present leases are ending in June of this year, there is nowhere in this amount of time to find another place to properly give them the education they need. There is 23 staff that would lose their job and 124 students that would be displaced because of the zoning issue. The accreditation was just performed in September of 2018, of which there were no limitations.
Could you wrap it up, please? Sorry.
My main concern is that I would lose this school and would not be able to keep the students who have or be able to enroll anymore, so I'm asking for a special variance to be done as soon as possible so that we could keep the students. It's all going to be maintained within the school.
Great, thank you.
And I have the letter right here for each one.
You can leave that with the clerk. Thank you. Mr. Dittson? I saw you somewhere. Where's he at? Oh, there he is. Come on down. Mr. and Mrs. Drago, did you want to speak on the Green Mountain issue? Maybe you're gone.
There's going to be any discussion of that?
Yeah, there'll be a public hearing and a presentation, so. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Dittson, I'm president of the Iber Neighborhood Association. Good evening. I did want to start out with a personal comment. It was good to see Dinosaur Ridge proclamation this evening. I thought after 65 million years, it's probably about time they got some recognition. I wanted to spend a moment reminding you, inviting you all to the Iber Neighborhood Association's annual meeting, which is scheduled for this Thursday, April 11th, at St. Paul's Episcopal Church. We'll start out with an open house, as we have in the past, at 6 o'clock. It'll run to 7 o'clock, where neighbors can meet, socialize. I've got developers, local businesses, Lakewood Police Department, West Metro Fire, and board members there to meet and greet. We'll also have a performance by Lakewood High School student vocalist at about 10 minutes before 7:00. So we ask neighbors to come at their convenience during the 6 to 7 hour, 7 o'clock hour. The general membership meeting will run from 7:00 to 8:00. And our keynote topic this year is Senior Resources, where we'll have Dave Apple of the Clement Center presenting. And we'll also have updates on the state of the neighborhood and some awards that we give out. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and that of your audience.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Let's see here, 11167 West 17th. Can't read the handwriting. Selena Basaria? Basaria? Okay. And is Linnea still here? She spoke earlier. I think she's gone. All right. So that exhausts the general public comment roster. Is there anybody who wants to speak? Anything that's not on the agenda? All right, I'll close public comment. And Mr. Dittson, you're an easy one. Thank you very much for the public service announcement. I would thank the neighborhoods who've come together. I know you've been working hard and have put together a thoughtful presentation, and I think that the best thing is to continue that dialogue with city staff as well as with the developer and see how that and where that goes. And then we'll make sure we have the information for the school and try to get a better understanding. Ms. Hodgson?
Yes, on both regards. Staff already or is trying to schedule a meeting with the White Fence Farm folks that you heard from this evening. And additionally, I understand staff is also working with the owner of the college, the skincare college.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. The use of the Consent Agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first-reading ordinances, which tonight, looks like it's all ordinances. First-reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first-reading ordinances. The public will have an opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings set forth by the dates tonight by City Council. Any council member may request an item on Consent Agenda be removed for separate discussion under General Business. The clerk, please read the Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda consists of items 17 through 19, or through 20 inclusive. Item 17, Ordinance O. 2019-17, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $300,000 to the 2019 fiscal year to fund the July 2nd, 2019 special municipal election and further declaring an emergency. Item 18, Ordinance O. 2019-18, for the conveyance of a water line easement to the Bear Creek Water and Sanitation District across a portion of Hodgson Park. Item 19, Ordinance O. 2019-19, repealing and replacing portions of Chapter 9.52 and Chapter 12.04 of the Lakewood Municipal Code concerning noise. And item 20, approving the City Council meeting minutes of February 25th, 2019.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of the council minutes and order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the Consent Agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. I'd just make one comment. We rarely do emergencies, and emergency just means as soon as it's signed, it becomes law, which will allow those funds to be utilized. All right, anything else? Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. The clerk, please read item 21.
Item 21, Ordinance O. 2019-9, endorsing the projects and project funding levels in the city of Lakewood 2019 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, and I will ask Amy Deeknicker to come on down, and she's going to give us a presentation. Good evening.
I am Amy Deeknicker. I am a planner with Lakewood's Comprehensive Planning and Research Division, and I also manage the Community Development Block Grant Program. Tonight, I am here to brief you on the 2019 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The action plan outlines the projects and funding levels for the 2019 program year, which begins on June 1st, 2019, and ends on May 31st, 2020. Before I get into the actual projects, I'll give a quick overview for everyone, just so you can understand the program a little bit more. The Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, is a federally administered grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and it's managed through Lakewood's Comprehensive Planning and Research Division. These grant funds are allocated through states, counties, and cities to be spent locally on local housing and community development efforts. The annual allocation amount is based on a formula that's derived by population, age of housing stock, poverty rate, and income of the households that reside within the community. These grant funds are either used directly through the city departments or passed through to nonprofit agencies that help with housing and community development needs. Lakewood has received CDBG funds since 1974, which was the first year that the program was started, and we get about $900,000 annually. All community development block grant funds must meet one of these three objectives. It must either benefit moderate and low-income people, reduce or eliminate slum or blight, or address an urgent community need, which is most often a natural disaster. In Lakewood, the majority of our grant funds are used for the first objective, and that is to benefit those low and moderate-income people that live within Lakewood. Each year, HUD identifies the income limits used to determine who is moderate to low-income. In Lakewood, this would be a family of four earning $72,000 or less. So projects qualify based on an individual's income and family size, or if projects benefit an entire area, that would be considered lower moderate income based on census data. We, so on the map in front of you here, you can see kind of the dark blue areas are those census tracts where 51% or more of the households that reside there earn 80% or less of the area median income. And we in Lakewood call those our CDBG target areas. Projects that are typically funded through these target, or identified as target area projects are typically neighborhood park improvements or infrastructure improvements. This is just a list of, I've included that is eligible and non-eligible uses for CDBG grant funds, just to give you a little bit of an idea of how you can use these. And as with all federal funding, there are a variety of other federal rules and regulations that the program must adhere to. Some of the main ones include obtaining environmental clearance for all projects that the funds are used. They, the funds must be used in a timely manner. Construction projects must comply with all labor standards, and we must also follow a public participation plan. Only a maximum of 20% of the grant funds can be used for administrative activities. Only a maximum of 20% of the grant funds can be used for administrative activities, and there is also a 15% cap on funding that goes directly to benefit individuals through services. So every five years, HUD requires entitlement communities to identify the greatest needs that they see in their community. Once those needs are identified, each community must outline how those needs will be addressed over the next five years. This five-year report is called the Consolidated Plan, and this is Lakewood's guiding document for the CDBG program. Lakewood's Consolidated Plan was last updated in 2015, and through that planning process, these following three priorities, priority needs were addressed, neighborhood improvements in target areas, housing rehabilitation and improvements, and supportive services for low-income and special needs communities. All CDBG projects proposed over the next five years through the Annual Action Plan, which is what I'm talking about tonight, must address one of these needs. Lakewood will actually begin our next consolidated planning process towards the end of this year, and we will be doing our 2020 through 2025 Consolidated Plan. This map identifies the locations and project types within the city where CDBG was used during the 2017 program year. In Lakewood, we complete a variety of projects through both city departments and nonprofit agencies, and we do our very best to leverage the funding as far as we can by using city staff when possible, and we try to complete projects that have a comprehensive socioeconomic impact to the community. So now that I've given a little context here of the overall program, I'll get into the action plan. The action plan is basically Lakewood's application to HUD for our annual CDBG allocation. Our 2019 resources include the estimated allocation for the 2019 grant, program income, which is money received from the repayment of loans from our single-family housing rehabilitation program, and then we also have reserves from previous years. Now, although the actual allocation is still an estimate because Congress has not given us notification on what that is, we do not anticipate a significant change in our estimated number here. And if there is any change, we will just adjust the CDBG reserves from past years. So the funding, the CDBG total budget and the funding levels of all the project will not change from tonight. Okay. So the following is just a list of our projects. We have our Section 108 loan repayment. This is a repayment that is budgeted each year for our Section 108 loan, which helped to fund the improvements to Ray Ross Park and also the Head Start facility at 11th and Lamar. And for anyone who's unfamiliar with what a Section 108 loan is, it's a loan through HUD where you are able to borrow a large amount of money and then pay it back through your annual allocation. So we will be doing that through 2021. Our single-family housing rehabilitation program, we contract with Jefferson County Housing Authority to provide emergency grants and low-interest loans to low-income homeowners to do necessary improvements to their homes. Last year, we were able to assist 23 homeowners to make these improvements. Again, this year, we will also, as part of the single-family housing rehab program, be partnering with Brothers Redevelopment to assist elderly and disabled low-income homeowners, as well with exterior painting and minor yard cleanup. Through this, we call it Lakewood Help for Homes program, we were able to assist four homeowners with CDBG funds last year. And as another bonus, Lakewood staff, West Metro Fire, and other service organizations all worked together last September to help to actually volunteer at these sites, at these four homes. So it was a very good community effort on everyone's part. Public facility projects this year, we will be installing new playground equipment at the Idlewild Park in the Iber neighborhood. The play equipment there will replace small outdated play equipment that's needed to be updated for quite some time, so we're happy to help out with that little pocket park there. CDBG neighborhood cleanup, this is a program that's funded year after year, very popular. We will be doing neighborhood cleanup events for CDBG target areas south of Sixth Avenue. I always like to give the stats for what we did. This is one event per year. Last year, our cleanup filled 16 roll-off dumpsters, recycled 309 tires, 52 appliances, and just over 6,700 pounds of electronics and 5,660 pounds of scrap metal. And then in addition to that, households are always encouraged to donate food or cash donations to the Action Center, and we were able to generate 1,924 pounds of food and $276 in cash donations. Our supportive service projects include childcare scholarships for low-income families attending Head Start. These scholarships allow parents to remain working full-time or to pursue educational opportunities while their children are attending the Head Start. Last year, we were able to provide 73 children with these childcare scholarships. And then another supportive housing, or supportive support project is our Metro West Housing Self-Sufficiency Program. This is a program that provides services and programs to assist Metro West Housing Solution residents with important life skills to become more self-sufficient. Some of the programs include case management, after-school programs, nutrition classes, first-time homebuyers education, transportation and recreation scholarships. Over 221 residents participated in one or more of those last year. And then we have our homeless activities. It's a new program that we are piloting this year. The city will be reserving funding for eligible activities to assist the homeless in our community. Through partnerships with Jefferson County Human Services, Lakewood Police, and other local service providers, collaborative strategies are being developed to both prevent and respond to families and individuals experiencing homelessness in Lakewood. Activities could include limited rental assistance, emergency motel vouchers, case management, transportation services, or acquisition or rehab of temporary to permanent housing or homeless-serving activities. These funds will be reserved and not allocated to specific projects because we don't know those yet, and this way, it allows the city to be flexible and responsive to emergency needs as they're identified through the program year. And then lastly, we have our CDBG administration. This provides for the salary and benefit package of one and a half full-time employees in addition to paying for all the costs associated with the planning, oversight, and management of the CDBG program. So this concludes my presentation. I'm asking city council to please endorse the action plan and approve the ordinance before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Amy. Nice presentation. Councilor Labir?
One question I had was on the Section 108 loan repayment, how much do we owe? Or how long will that take for the debt to be retired?
We will be in the program year 2021, so it will be in June of 2022. We will have that all paid.
Okay. I was just curious about that because I believe every year since this administration's been in the White House, they've proposed getting rid of CDBG funds every single, I think I said that wrong, every single year since they've been there. So this is just, I was curious about that. I was also curious about the FTEs, but thanks for explaining that. And then, I just want to mention, obviously, it sounds like the homeless initiative is new, so you guys are just working on where those dollars would get spent. My only comment on that was just, it's not a whole lot of money generally, so it seemed to me that it would be good for it to be very purposeful in where we spend it, but obviously, I think that, it sounds like it'll just take some time to develop that. But anyway.
I'd like to add to that. The other part of that program is the Navigator Program, that you'll see a request for actual positions with the budget process. So that goes hand in hand with the program dollars that Amy just spoke of.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. Nice presentation. I just had a few questions, please. The $138,000 in unspent previous years, is that typical to have that from year to year like that, or rather than to spend it on some of the needs that you have?
I would actually say it is quite typical because of the large dollar amounts and the projects that we fund year after year. Often, some of the projects come in under budget. Some projects are approved and budgeted, and they may not come to fruition. There's just kind of a lot of variables that often allow for some unspent funds or reserves. The City of Lakewood is required to, is allowed to have up to one and a half times the annual grant amount in addition to each annual grant. So we are in complete compliance, and we are actually in good shape. It's a nice feature to have so that we can kind of keep that proposed budget moving forward prior to the actual allocation coming in like we're doing tonight.
It just seemed high to me, so I appreciate your explanation. How does a person contact you if they need some kind of assistance that you're offering?
We have information on the City of Lakewood's website, so www.lakewood/cdbg. I'm happy to help or answer any questions that anyone has.
Could you please tell me the administrative cost is 175 for one and a half FTEs, right?
Yes.
Okay. What has it been in previous years?
It's typically been between 150 and 175, I would say, over the past five years or so.
Okay.
Yes. And a lot of, a good portion of that, what's budgeted for those dollars, are our consolidated planning process that we're going to be going forward with. We will be hiring a consultant to help with that report, as well as another HUD-mandated report that will be due in 2020.
Okay. And then also, I noticed in your report where you had descriptors of some of the different neighborhoods with Two Creeks and Northeast, and you also had Iber. Two Creeks and Northeast, you mentioned that they have fewer parks, and I would like to ask you if you could please put that descriptor as well in Iber.
Absolutely.
That's an area that also needs more parks.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Great. I will now open the public hearing. Nicole Bopp, you signed up to speak on this.
Yes.
Come on down. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I just wanted to be brief in thanking you for the opportunity to have CBG grants and to the staff who make sure that we're continuing to be eligible. I'm here as, on behalf of the Iber Neighborhood Association, I serve as the Vice President, and we were a grant applicant for the Idlewild Park Improvement, Playground Improvement, and I also live directly in that subdivision. And my neighbors and I just wanted to share with you how thrilled we are to have this project being recommended for funding. Over 30% of the people who live in that subdivision signed in support of this application. And my, obviously, I'm going to be very self-interested in seeing the improvements in this park, but it is really necessary. There are very few parks in Idlewild because of the situation of the northern boundary of the Light Rail, Kipling, Oak Street, and then Colfax. It's a very isolated little subdivision, and this little park improvement will go a long way, so I wanted to convey to you how thrilled the neighbors are and encourage you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. I'll close public comment and ask for a motion. Please.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of ordinance is O. 2019-9.
I happily second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Please cast your votes. Passes, nope. I need someone else to vote. I had to vote. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Well done. Thanks, Amy. Madam Clerk, will you please read? Are you going to read both items into the record at once, or do you want to?
We can read them both in at once and open the public hearing on both. Item 22, Ordinance O. 2019-10, annexing certain property to be known as the 2019 Green Mountain Annexations located in Section 7, 18, and 19, Township 4 South, Range 69 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, and in Section 14, Township 4 South, Range 70 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. And item 23, Ordinance O. 2019-11, to rezone land located at 14100 West Exposition Place, Lakewood, Colorado, 80401, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Ross Williams. Looking good tonight in your tie, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the staff presentation for the annexation and initial zoning of the 2019 Green Mountain Annexations for the city council meeting tonight. I am Ross Williams, your facility planner for the Department of Community Resources. I will be presenting as the applicant's representative, and with me is Kara Mueller, senior planner for the city planning department, who will be representing the City of Lakewood as the annexing jurisdiction. The City of Lakewood is proposing to annex three areas on Green Mountain into the corporate limits of the city. The majority of the property proposed to be annexed is owned by the city, with one parcel owned by the Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District. The proposed zoning for all properties to be annexed is R16 Small Lot Residential. This matches the adjacent zoning currently within the City of Lakewood. There is no proposed development of the land being annexed into the city. The city property is all owned for park and open space purposes and will remain that upon annexation. The Green Mountain Water and Sanitation parcel is an existing underground water storage These two pictures show the general character of the land being annexed and zoned. The top picture is looking north from the general vicinity of the radio tower on Green Mountain and shows the eastern slope that is to be annexed, this area down and this area here. The lower picture is looking at the mountain from the Kendrick Lake area. What is visible on the right and in front of the radio tower is the majority of the property that is being annexed. The radio tower doesn't show very well. It's right here. The area being annexed is this whole face of Green Mountain over here. The process and timing to annex property into a municipality is regulated by state statutes. The first step is initiated by the applicant petitioning the municipality it desires to be a part of. In this case, the City Department of Community Resources representing the property owners has petitioned to have the properties annexed into the City of Lakewood, and that was done at your February 11th meeting. This action did not annex the property, but initiated the process to annex and zone the property. The second step in the process is for the City Planning Commission to review the petition request and make recommendations to city council on the annexation petition and propose an initial zoning of the property. The last step, and that was done, the Planning Commission was done on February 20th, and I believe the minutes from those meetings are in your packet. The last step is for city council to hear the recommendations of the Planning Commission, conduct a public hearing on the proposal, and take action on the proposal. This action would be completed by an ordinance. The ordinance process requires The ordinance process requires the first reading to be set, the date of the public hearing, and the first reading was on March 25th. And the second reading, tonight, is the action night for the City Council, and we hope you will pass the ordinances provided. This slide shows the general vicinity of the three proposed annexation and zonings in relationship to the current city boundary, the surrounding street system, and the next few slides will show enlargements of these three annexations. This slide shows the Kelly Number 2 Annexation. This parcel includes the property owned by Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District, which is right up in this general area on the map. It comprises of approximately 258 acres. It is completely surrounded by land within the City of Lakewood. This aerial shows the northeast annexation, is a parcel comprising of approximately 2.35 acres contiguous with the city boundary on the south. Immediately north of this parcel is property owned by the Foothills Parks and Recreation District in unincorporated Jefferson County. The northwest annexation is 9.2 acres, and is contiguous with C470 on the west, Golden to the north, and the city limits in William Frederick Hayden Park on the south and east. The current zoning for the properties in the county are as follows. The northwest and Kelly Number 2 are zoned A2 Agricultural. The northeast is part of a residential plan development. The land is, the land contiguous to each of these parcels in the City of Lakewood are all zoned R16 Small Lot Residential. City zoning code requires neighborhood meetings be held before formal application is submitted. The city held a neighborhood meeting on January 25th, 2018, at the Green Mountain Recreation Center. Approximately 80 individuals attended the meeting, and questions were asked at the meeting related to the maintenance of the park, potential of development of a parking lot on the northeast property, and an understanding of what the proposed zoning is and land use. For the Planning Commission meeting, the property was posted, a notice was published in the appropriate media, and notices were mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the property, along with neighborhood organizations within 1,000 feet of the property. For City Council action, notice was published for four weeks prior to the date of action. All the affected special districts were notified, and an impact report was properly filed and The Planning Commission received comments from Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District, West Metro Fire Protection District, Jefferson County, and XL Energy in relation to annexation and zoning. No concerns were expressed with the annexation and zoning. All services will be as they are currently existing. Neighbors at the neighborhood meeting asked questions about the proposed zoning, protection of the property as parks and open space, and a rumor of a parking lot in the northeast We have to admit, I think Counselor Skelling was at the meeting, and the gentleman perpetuated that rumor just to get more people to be involved in the public meeting, and it had no substantiation of his claim that there was ever a proposal for a parking lot up there. There's no special zoning for parks in the city zoning code. Parks may occur in any zone district. The proposed zone district for the annexed property will match adjacent zoning in the city. By the city charter, land held for parks and open space purposes may not be changed or otherwise disposed of without the proposed use change being presented to the electorate and a positive vote for the change. No parking off South Flora Way has ever been proposed by the city, and this rumor, as I mentioned, was promulgated by adjacent property owners. The City Planning Staff has determined that the proposed annexation is in conformance with the Lakewood Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Staff also recommended that the proposed annexation is in conformance with the city's three-mile plan. The proposed annexation is in conformance with KHRA revised statutes regarding municipal annexations. More than 50% of the landowners have petitioned for annexation, whereas 98% of the landowners. Each annexation has a boundary with greater than 1/6 conjuguity with current city boundaries. The proposed properties demonstrate a common interest with adjacent land use within the city, and the annexations will not extend beyond three miles from the current city boundaries. The proposed zoning for the annexed properties meets the standards of the city's comprehensive plan. Proposed zoning is consistent with adjacent city zoning. The future land use of the properties matches current adjacent uses. The proposed zoning will allow the new parcels to integrate with existing adjacent parcels. There are no additional city engineering requirements made by the proposed annexation and zoning, since there is no proposed development of the property. Finally, the City Planning Staff and Community Resources Staff recommended adoption of Ordinance 2019-10 and 11, annexing and zoning the 2019 Green Mountain Annexations into the City of Lakewood. I will be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Mueller, are you going to go next? No?
That's the whole presentation.
That's the whole presentation?
Do you want more?
Okay. So, we have some questions, and before I go to the public hearing, because I think, hopefully, we got some of those answered. But I want to reiterate what you said about the annexation and the zoning of this land. Does not change the use, does not allow it to be anything other than parkland, just like all of our other parkland. Correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counselor Franks?
I wanted to say, I really appreciate you stressing that multiple times, but unfortunately, Counselor Skelling and I had to feel the pain of folks not understanding. I think we have done ourselves a disservice when you have a sign up and hikers are going by, and they see R16. It's just a conclusion that you would come to. And so, I remember at a point in my previous life, before I was on council, saying, "We probably need a Zone District O." I realized that it doesn't change the outcome, meaning that the land is as protected as it's going to be. It would have to go to a vote of the people who would say it would, for another use. But I would like to continue to throw it out there that I think we need to have a Zone District that is for parkland. That way, when we go to do something like this, it's just not a huge confusion for folks. We spent a lot of time tamping down. It's just not a worthwhile use of our time. And this has now been the second or third time that we've gone through this. So I really don't have any question for you, other than to say that as you're rethinking some of these things in Planning Commission, let's please consider just doing a Zone District O, rezoning all the park space, and then we don't have to deal with this in the future. Thanks.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Nice presentation, Ross. Actually, I'd like to back up on what Counselor Franks was talking about, because I think there's always a concern that even though it has been said, that things have a way of changing. And as I was reading through the presentation, there was something in there about an R143. And could you talk a little bit about that? What does that mean, and why did that even come up? It was unclear to me.
There, well, the city zoning ordinance does have an R143, which is, basically, is one-acre lots, and that's a zone district that could be recommended for this. However, if you look at the parcel in relationship to all the land around it, all of the land around it is zoned R16. And our comprehensive plan says, try to be consistent, try to match the zoning, try to match into the existing around it. And so, we've, the recommendation was to continue, just to keep all the zone district exactly the same across the whole area around these parcels.
Okay. Actually, I would have to piggyback up also, again, with Counselor Franks. It would be nice if we could have that type of zoning in order to codify this. Somehow, if we can look at that, I'd like to see that as well. Also, I noticed that it will not become effective until 1/1 of 20. It was, did I misread that? I don't have the page in front of me, but... Perhaps I misread it, Ross? Maybe it was something else.
I believe so. I believe it was our normal 30 days for ordinances regarding that. It should be from the date that it's passed.
Okay, because, yeah, there was a document in there that was going to be effective when...
Forty-five days for the rezoning. I was just reminded.
So that is correct, then? That just seems like a long ways out. Or am I...
The ordinance for the rezoning is typical to any rezoning. It'd be 45 days from basically the Thursday after this, because it's from the date of publication.
Okay.
And then I believe it's 30 days for the annexation. And it'll still fall within the fact that you have to rezone within 90 days of an annexation proceeding if it moves forward. So that's why, that plus transparency is the reason we bring them together for the initial zoning, as well as the annexation, so that there's no confusion, you can hear everything all at once.
Perfect. And the last thing that I noticed was that part of the Green Mountain Water portion that is being annexed, it's my understanding, it has an underground water tank, is that right? Okay, I just...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Please help me with this. How large are these things? Do they leak? What are they made out of? And does Green Mountain ever need to have access to that? How does that work? Or Green Mountain Water?
Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District owns several underground water storage facilities all across the east face of Green Mountain. I believe there are six surrounded, or five or six that are surrounded by the City of Lakewood. There is one above-ground storage tank at the very north end of the annexation that we're currently there. All the underground storage tanks, I believe, are concrete-lined facilities that the district maintains regularly. There are easements connecting these tanks to the water system within the Green Mountain Sanitation, Water and Sanitation District that are maintained within those easements, and they have the right to go through those easements and maintain their water lines and their tanks. These were, all these, all these Green Mountain tanks were in existence prior to the city acquiring interest in the property.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor Proton Abel?
A few years back, Lakewood Park was proposed to be commercially, underlying commercial zoning. One of the concerns at the time was that that would have allowed, if there were to be a community building built on the park, that underlying zoning as commercial would have allowed a larger building on the park site. The neighbors raised the issue, and Planning Administration decided that residential zoning would be a good, underlying zoning would be a good idea, since that park was surrounded on three sides by residential. With Councilwoman Franks and Johnson, I would like to see a designation that would kind of free those parks from any underlying zoning, be it residential, commercial, MEU. But that's probably a discussion for another night.
That would be a planning and zoning question that probably be appropriate bringing up with Travis and his group.
We'll have an appointment, Mr. Parker?
Counselor Skelling?
Well, if we're just going to beat around it, I would just, I think the community would enjoy knowing why we do R16 residential, because as Councilwoman Franks indicated, we did get a large volume of interest in this. And the meeting that Mr. Williams had also referenced, I don't think anybody, other than the Sixth Avenue West folks, who are really concerned about that little strip, other than them, nobody would have showed up to that meeting if it wasn't zoned residential. I mean, that's the problem. We get it with everything. So I think, while we're here, why is it that we do everything as R16 and not as some open space designation? Seems like a Mr. Cox, or...
That would require a little more research to fully answer the question, but I can tell you, it's something that gets looked at, it's something that's adopted in some jurisdictions and not in others. There are reasons not to have it at the moment. One reason that comes up is under our regulations for disposal of city-owned property. The measure is whether something is held or used for park purposes. It's not really a zoning question, it's how it's actually used. And so, you could potentially have a situation where a piece of property is zoned for park purposes but not used for that purpose, and that may make it difficult to, you know, do something with that property if it's not intended to be used as a park for long-range planning. So I would defer to Mr. Parker for further discussion of the pros and cons of parks zoning, but it is something that can be discussed.
Well, I think, and we can do that, I'm happy to take that project on. I think the result I would probably not come up with is the R, is the residential part. I mean, that's the part that freaks everybody out. You could say any other words other than that, and you probably wouldn't get the response. Whether we call it City Park Purpose Activity Zone, come up with the longest acronym you can think of, and we do that, it would probably still, even if it's confusing, would not freak everybody out for no good reason. Because that's what they see. Green Mountain says, R16 Small Lot Residential. And then you say, "Well, no, we don't really mean Small Lot Residential. That's just the thing that we have." And that response is getting tiresome. But I'm certainly happy to take that on, and I maybe, we'll talk with others about that as well, and see what we can come up with. If those are the issues, I think we can solve it, so that we don't have R16 again the next time we annex something. Thank you.
And I would echo, I think the real protection lies in our charter. It's parkland. The city also has land that it owns that isn't parkland, which is municipal purpose land, which doesn't need a vote of the people. So this is the most protected parcel, and I think if you called it mixed use, if you called it anything, it would alarm people. But the reason is, when you annex something in, you have to also do the zoning, and all of our parkland has a zoning attached to it, and it's always protected in perpetuity unless for some reason the majority of the population want to change it. And so, you know, we certainly have folks who are here who are concerned, and hopefully this helped lend itself to some of the concerns that are out there. But again, as echoed, protected by the charter, which is the constitution of the City of Lakewood, as parkland. Counselor Franks?
Ultimately, since the land's protected either way, it's just, next time if we could put at the bottom the sign, you know, a little more explanation. I'm not asking for a lot, other than not spending as much time on this. So at the bottom, if it literally said, "Refer to the charter, this land is permanently protected by charter," just some verbiage that would have tamped all this down and wouldn't have allowed it to kind of spin up out of control.
They did say, "for park purposes," and would continue to be "park purposes" at the bottom. Yes, on the sign.
I will attest, I saw Mr. Williams out putting signs up on Green Mountain.
I think I agree that the language was on the sign. I went past those signs many times. I think maybe we can make those words more prominent, maybe at the beginning of all the other language, and also at the end or something, because I happen to live in that area and heard a lot of concerns as well.
Great. All right. Now I'll open the public comment. Ms. Kosk, you don't wish to speak? You're good? Okay, all right.
It's definitely very clear.
Peter on South Braun Drive, do you wish to speak? Okay. Mr. Kilmer? On, can't read it. K-I-L-M-E-R, here, no. Mr. and Mrs. Drago? Come on down. Then Mr. Apple. Again, three minutes. Again, three minutes. Two and a half green, 30 seconds yellow. Welcome, nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name's Steve Drago, and I'm a, one of your neighbors up in the Green Mountain area. First came to Colorado 40 years ago. Kept trying to stay here, and a military career pulled me away until finally, even though two kids were born here about 20 years ago, we came back and made Lakewood our home just over four years ago, and bought a property up in, in Green Mountain. Thank you so much for your comments tonight, your leadership with this. And I did want to bring just a bit of context to the discussion, because it sounds here like it's all academic and it's all on the sign and we're good to go. But there are actually, a lot of people's lives are feeling, they're feeling very disturbed right now, many of our neighbors. I'm thinking of one in particular, Charlotte, 76-year-old neighbor who's lived there for 30 years. And she's terrified that the same thing's going to happen, like what the folks up with the white farm issue are facing, or what happened with the giant apartments down that used to be a field, or et cetera, et cetera. So, in light of, yes, we have that 1% growth, the impact, though, is not 1% on the folks in that area, as you know. And I know you know this, but I would support you 100% with the idea to actually come up with some statement, because we can say that this is all in the charter. But then when you see on the PowerPoint slides, no development proposed, which then the elliptical part is, "at this moment, but watch out, because this is coming to get you. So don't buy here, because you can't trust what's going to happen down the road." And that's just the concern, as you know, of our neighbors. So I would really encourage you and support you and thank you if you can actually somehow codify that, that yes, this will be protected in perpetuity. Because that really is the crown jewel of the entire west side of Denver area. It's wonderful. So thank you for what you do all the time, every day, and staying this late to hear us and do what you do for the community. Thank you.
This is early. Mr. Apple, come on down. Good evening.
Hi, how are you, Mr. Mayor?
Nice to see you, sir.
Nice to see you as well. My name is Arthur Apple, I live at 14387 West Exposition Drive, right there across from Open Space. And my wife and I have lived there for the last 22 years. We moved there to kind of come up from the city a little bit and get into a little more quiet area, and then especially because of the open space, the park area on the, on the east side down below us. And we also were very concerned about them continuing with building across from us, as well as up the mountain and at, up the dead ends and so on. And we had heard the stories about Kelly Property and how the city of Lakewood had taken it over and so on, and how it came to be under the auspices and responsibility of the city of Lakewood, and that there would be no more residential development in our area on the hill. Unless it was signed off by the residents that would be impacted by it, which is basically both sides of the mountain, Green Mountain on the Alameda side and on our north side. And how many of our people that lived on the hill are going to sign off on new development and continue to develop out the mountain and have all that more traffic and congestion services that are a little overloaded and so on? Who would going to sign up, sign off on it? So we bought the house, we've been happy as a clam. I have not enjoyed my lifestyle as much in the last 20 years as I have in living in Lakewood. And I've lived in other parts of Lakewood, 20, about 22 years, in other parts of Lakewood, down near Garrison and Sixth. And so, yes, this has all gotten everybody sort of unnerved, but where are they? Why haven't they come and showed up? I think the only answer that I can come up with is apathy. I think they feel so powerless that they look at maybe the city, or the council, or the planning commission as a machine. And if they want to get their way, they're going to get their way, and there's nothing they're going to be able to do. And they basically didn't show. It's a, it's a matter of trust, is what it all comes down to. And yes, R-1 to R-6 is terrifying. If it was, and if it was O or R-143, even though there was an R in front of it, the general understanding of what R-143 is somewhat known out there. I've talked to a lot of people that live on the hill around me. And they, they would be so thrilled if the rezoning part of this annexation could be something other than an R zoning category. You know, okay, I see, I'm supposed to stop. I have talked to a lot of people in the neighborhood, and they all feel the same way, too. They're scared to death, and it's a trust issue. So if you could do something about it this time, not for the next annexation, but this annexation, yeah, I think you'd make a lot of people happy in the city of Lakewood. And thank you for allowing me to get up and speak.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So that exhausts the roster, anybody else on this? Yes, please. You were signed up on a previous sheet, right? That's okay, welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmen and Women. My name is Mark Waldcamp, and I've been a Lakewood resident for about 35 years. I'm fortunate enough to live right on the flanks of Green Mountain, and I walk and bike Green Mountain probably three or four times a week now that I'm retired. I have a question about the Green Mountain Water and Sanitation property. I know, and I've walked that area many times, I know it, I know it like the back of my hand. That is an underground water storage. My question is, will that change from being an underground water storage? And if it does not, does the city incur any liability? Should there be any sort of damage or leak? Or any other problem related to this underground water storage? That's, that's the first question. Then, then the other one is, will, by taking this within the city, will that area that is housed by this underground water storage facility, which has a hideous-looking barbed wire fence around it, will that change? Can we actually make it look like the rest of Green Mountain and not, not a prison border?
Thank you. We'll finish the public comment. Anybody else, sir? Come on down. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, I did not sign up, I'd be happy to give name and address. My name is Greg Kraxberger, I'm Ward Ford. I have been a longtime resident of Lakewood and a business owner within the city of Lakewood continuously for 35 years. I've got quite a stake into the city. One of the things that I have noticed in my time of being in business is that my property's been rezoned four times. I can't keep up with it anymore. I was rather shocked to see what I can do with my property right now. And I'm just going like, this is crazy, and I'd never want to do that to my neighbors. It's a wide-open zoning, and zoning is what zoning is. But my issue is back onto this point. When you sign a contract, you go by what the written word is, and not by any verbal assurances. And I hear the verbal assurances that this will be protected underneath the charter, and that it will be, once it is public lands, that it cannot be. But that's all open for interpretation. Then we have to go back to the city charter, and that can create other legal issues. If it comes in and it's signed in on this contract for annexation, that it's R-1 zoning, I don't want to hear later on coming back saying, "Well, you took it in and you knew it was R-1 zoning", regardless of what was said. What it goes down is that it's got that zoning. It just seems inappropriate that if it's park, why can't you call it park? We have a large portion of parks within the city of Lakewood. I think all of them should carry a uniform designation to say, "it's parks". What hurts? What hurts to call a duck a duck? If it looks like a park, then let's call it a park and give it those protections with that, and not call it something else and say, "Well, that's really what it is, trust us". So, Counselor Skilling, if you wouldn't, wanted to take that on, or if anyone wanted to. I think it would really be appropriate, it just makes sense, that's good government. I think that the people would be much happier to know that it is actually going to be kept as a park. I have one question, I don't have the time for it, but I really would like to know, why does the city of Lakewood want this so bad? What's the issue that taking on extra responsibility? I can see enclosing the borders and making one portion, but it seems like the city of Lakewood doesn't get very much for taking it on. Thank you very much for hearing me, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the council.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so Ms. Hotson, I may have to have you help me here, or Mr. Williams. So the Green Mountain Water, prior to 9/11, you didn't have to have fences on any of the properties. I was on the water board. That's a whole separate Homeland Security, that's changed, because you had vulnerable water facilities sitting out in the wide open. So, you're not going to see fences come down, probably, I can't imagine. That's just the way of the world, that's why those fences went up. As far as any sorts of leaks, things like that, that's still on, on Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District. Those are their properties. Second, will it be, it is already designated parkland? It's also, not only by our charter, it's parkland, but it was purchased with open space dollars, or some of open space dollars, which could potentially add another layer of protection to that. And why do we want it? Because we just bought it. We've been paying for it for 20 years, and we just paid the last $200,000 for that piece of property. And so it is now ours, and it makes sense to bring what we just purchased into the city of Lakewood, if that helps on that. So, Mr. Williams, the question was, where would somebody go to find that that is deeded parkland? Is that actually in the deed, then?
I'd have to look at the deed, the council accepted the parcel as parks and open space land, large parcels as parks and open space land.
All three of them were accepted for parks and open space?
All, all three of them, I was just reminded. Adrian just reminded, they were accepted for parks and open space purposes. So that was the, puts that park and open space connotation on the properties. Some, yeah, some, the two northern parcels were in, were purchased with open space funds. The large portion was used with Conservation Trust funds, which has, has conservation required on it. So it'd be, the council resolution adopting or accepting those deeds would be the place to look at those things.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, one, it has zoning on it. So unfortunately, when we annex and we take zoning, which wouldn't put my mind at ease if it was any kind of zoning, whether it was R, M, any kind of zoning, I understand that. So, but we have conservation easements, we have our charter, and we have Jefferson County open space dollars, all protecting this land in perpetuity, unless for some reason, not just the people of Green Mountain decided they wanted to change it, would have to be the entire city of Lakewood would have to change that designation.
That is correct. As the charter reads, the proposal would have to be presented to City Council. City Council would have to determine if they wanted to accept the proposal and refer the proposal to the citizens of Lakewood with all the, the exact language in the, without question, okay, the, the terms and consideration have to be also presented to the citizens of Lakewood for the entire citizenry of Lakewood to register electors of the city at a special or regular municipal, municipal election, and shall vote in favor by majority of those registered electors voting in those elections, would have to make those changes. Now, if, these particular parcels do not have those mistakes reverted on, but in other cases, there's mixed hodgepodge of different ownership patterns that we have on Green Mountain. If land was given, or purchased by the city through the open space program and went through the Jefferson County process, there would also be another layer of, on that. If the citizens voted to change it from park and open space, we don't have the say on some of those parcels, they'd revert to the county, and they would have final say on who would, what those properties would be. Even, even if the citizens of Lakewood voted to sell the property for real estate interest, anything, any interest out there, those properties would revert to the county before they could be actually developed out there. So the city of Lakewood has very strong protections for park and open space property within its city charters. And it's, one of the, looking at, over the metro area, is one of the more stringent and tougher regulations regarding parks and open space in the, in the metro area.
Thank you. Ms. Hotson?
The only thing I, the only other thing I would add is, Ross mentioned, part of the funding is from the Conservation Trust Fund, and those are the lottery dollars. Again, another layer of protection. Once something's purchased with lottery dollars, very similar to Jefferson County open space dollars, we, we can't turn it into anything else. So, there really are layers and layers of protection. It's unfortunate that the zoning is misleading and that it's caused this consternation, because that parkland was purchased over a long period of time for the sole purpose of park and open space, to provide some relief from the urban setting in the city. And I remember from years past, as does Ross, that that was the intent of this purchase. So, there really are layers and layers of protection of this property, and there, there won't be development, residential, commerce, or anything else.
Counselor Franks?
Well, I wanted to thank everybody for going through this. I think that this conversation, it was important to have. Talking through all of those layers really does help. And, but I do want to respect the gentleman who came and spoke, maybe there was a couple, about trust. You have folks who, from, we're immersed in this, and so we kind of, you know, get to see it at a different level. You know, you have people who, not too long ago, there was a trade, a possible trade proposed for some parkland. So, people who, that have that in their mind, they don't know all these details, and so their trust isn't high. Then we had land that was set aside for municipal purposes inside of an ODP. And again, citizens had to fight for, for that land. So I want to respect that, but I also wanted to call out that certainly we're hearing about layer upon layer upon layer of protection. So I just have one question. As an additional layer of protection, which I think would be sort of a non-issue, you said earlier, Ross, that the R-16 is just because that's what surrounds it, and generally we like to do that. But as an additional one, until Counselor Skilling and I can work on the O designation, whatever that entails, would a motion tonight to change the designation from R-16 to R-143, which has no meaningful outcome, I get that, but serve to add one more layer of, what would that do? I want to administratively know if that would cause any undue consternation?
One thing that hasn't been, the assumption seems to have been that, that there are no protections in the zoning code, that all our protections are external to the zoning code. The zoning code was written, and it hasn't been discussed tonight, that park space, no matter what it's zoned, can't be used for anything but park space. And that's specifically in the zoning code as well. It's chap, section 17.4.1.4, "City-owned land which is used or held for open space or park purposes shall not be permitted to be used for any purpose other than open space or parks purposes." So, the code was written so that it doesn't matter what our park space is zoned, it's limited, even by zoning. Even if there's a vote, you know, even if other things happen, now, external to zoning, there's another layer of protection in the zoning code itself.
And while I appreciate that, those of you that know, I was involved in the '29, that the use did not seem to protect our community in the way, way we wanted. So I guess the underlying question is, and while I do appreciate that you called that section out, is there any downside into me making a motion to change it from R-16 to R-143 as an additional one, more to, just kind of tamp down further? I'm asking, does it make, does it make a difference? If it would help with the perception and the trust? Again, is it, is it worth saying no to when it does nothing differently?
And I get that, but I want to be cautious in making motions that you'd said that probably doesn't make a difference. doesn't make a difference anyways, so.
Well, that's why I'm asking what the difference is for them. I'd like them to answer that question.
I think, and I'll, we can hear from Travis as well, but I think the fundamental issue we'd be dealing with is the process, where you have an application to zone to a certain designation, for better or worse, that's out there. The public is obligated to be notified of what that zone district is going to be, and maybe hard to conceive of why someone might show up for an R1-6 hearing but not for an R1-43 hearing. But that's part of the issue, is that you notice property and you publish what's going to happen and what's proposed for it, and people decide how to respond to it. So to then just assign a separate designation, a different zoning designation on the fly, would not be in keeping with the process that's designed to give people that opportunity to participate.
Well, I appreciate that. That's why I wanted to ask the question. I mean, again, we know it doesn't offer anything more, but I think it was a question that needed to be asked, and certainly we need to talk through that trust aspect, which then demonstrates that we really need to work on something that's more durable, more permanent, and tamps all this down. But I appreciate that. I won't be making the motion, but I wanted to ask the question.
Thank you. Counselor Skilling.
And I apologize if I didn't see it in the packet, but is there anything that would preclude this particular R1-6 from changing? If we do come up with some solution to what we've been talking about tonight and everyone's comfortable with it, whether it's called O or Plaid or whatever it's called, is there anything by us doing the zoning tonight, whether it's a vested issue or what have you, that would preclude it from being changed if, say, we came up with something in six months, and we wanted to rezone all of these types of parcels in the city? The reason I ask is because folks come in for the rezoning, they get the vested rights, and we can't change things, so.
Thank you, Counselor Skilling, for the question, and please feel free to jump in if this is incorrect, but I would say that we would just bring forward, if there was a parkland zoning, and probably bring all the parks forward at one time and just do a citywide initiated zoning to change those over. So no, it would be the same classification, excuse me, of any rezoning. You can always propose to rezone property within the city, no different for parkland, except that it's protected under the charter for parking purposes.
Counselor Gutwin.
I will look forward to these discussions and the development dialogue. It sounds like that's the direction we're heading, and I think that certainly makes sense. The last thing we want is to add undue concern in the community. But I just want to, you know, take this opportunity to say that I'm really excited that we're finishing this process. Green Mountain, somebody mentioned, is, you know, it's one of the crown jewels in the city of Lakewood, and open space is one of our biggest priorities and most important things to the community. So I'm just excited and proud that this will be preserved for generations to come in perpetuity. And no, you should never just trust a politician based on what they say. And, you know, that's what all the legal protections are for, and like Counselor Franks said, we do live this day in and day out, but, so I can understand that to someone who doesn't, the difference between a zoning protection and a charter protection, that may not be clear to everybody, but the reality is, is this has the highest and greatest protections available so that it will never be anything other than parkland. So, yeah, thank you.
Could I have a motion, please? Thank you.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2019-10 on second and final reading.
I second.
There's a motion, a second. Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. The rezone, please.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2019-11 on second and final reading, based on the findings of fact of the planning commission on February 20th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any comments? Please cast your votes. That passes 10 ayes, zero nays.
Can I just write it down?
Clerk, please read item 27. Is that correct?
Item, item 26.
26, thank you.
Ordinance O-2019-13, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the 2019 annual budget in the amount of $120,788, and authorizing the expenditure of grant funds from the Denver Regional Council of Governments for the West Colfax Pedestrian Safety Project.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Nobody's signed up to speak. Anybody seeing none, I'll close public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2019-13 on second and final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Waddell, thank you for hanging in tonight. This is a big deal. It's cool, and certainly something that we need along that corridor, so I'm excited to support it. Counselor Labear?
Yeah, I would just add to that. I'm really excited about this grant, really looking forward to hearing the findings of this study. And my only thing I'm really looking forward to is just when we have a discussion about how to put even more money into making sure that this is a pedestrian safety project is a priority in Lakewood, so excited about this. Thanks.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I'm appreciative for this, too. Hopefully somehow there'd be a way to address jaywalking. I don't know if this could do it or not, but I'd like to see that as part of it as well. Thank you.
All right, motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Clerk, please read item 27.
Item 27, ordinance O-2019-14, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the 2019 annual budget in the amount of $75,640, and authorizing the expenditure of grant funds from the state historical fund for sole source procurement of professional services to prepare construction drawings for three structures in the Okane Farm Historic District.
Very cool. I'll open up the public comment. Nobody's indicated which to speak. I'll close public comment, ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2019-14 on second and final reading.
I second.
Motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. All right. General business, council reports, mayor pro tem. Can I skip you? I can skip you.
No, that's okay.
A couple of things. The second annual meat loaf, M-E-E-T loaf, was held last weekend, and there were probably four dozen people there. The mayor came to speak despite the fact that it was a political, or an apolitical event. Everyone discussed neighbors and friends and how good the meat loaf and apple pie were. No politics. And there will be, according to the initial estimates, $450 was raised for the Action Center. Also, last week, there was the Stover fundraiser, Stover Elementary. It was a return to the 80s. There was a guy with a Reagan Bush T-shirt. There was a Boy George look-alike. It really took us back, for those of us who remember any part of the 80s. And it was nice to see that community come together, Applewood community come together to help Stover and the PTA. Thank you.
Counselor Rebbel.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, just wanted to remind everybody that the state of Colorado is going to be doing some work on the Wadsworth Corridor. So just wanted to reach out to all the traffic and say, please be patient, and please, 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 pedestrians, please be careful. We don't need any more accidents. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwin.
Thank you to everybody who came to our Ward Five meeting. We had a really great roundtable discussion about growth and our concerns about growth and what success would look like if we were to successfully manage growth. And put together a list on the whiteboard of about 50 or 60 things that were really important to consider in every decision that we make about growth. And we also went through the development dialogue proposals and asked for feedback about parking and short-term rentals and tiny homes. And so just want to thank everybody for the great discussion and the respectful discussion, and for the first time, we ate all of the donuts. So very, very good work on that as well. Thank you.
Counselor Skilling. Counselor Labear.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Charlie, for telling me a little bit more about the 80s. Sounds like an exciting time. Just want everybody to know, I'm having my award meeting. Counselor Vincent and I are having our award meeting Wednesday, 7:30, or 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We're having a little time change, so things are, we're switching things up a little bit. Hopefully, we're going to stick with this for a while and see how it goes. So I hope somebody shows up. I might be the only one there, but I think it'll be a good time. And that's at 15, that's at the 40 West Building, 1560 Teller Street. Police will be in attendance as well to help discuss issues in Ward Two, and I'll be in attendance, of course, for you to ask questions. So look forward to seeing someone there. Thanks.
Counselor Harrison.
Oh my goodness, you came around. I want to congratulate my award mate. She was awarded an award here pretty recently, Counselor Dana Gutwin, and I'm really proud of her, of what she did. She got an award for all of her hard work through Jefferson County Health Department, correct, for supporting the vaping or no vaping and trying to protect our youth. And I want to say, she is the epitome of a hard-working counselor that tries to protect our kids, and I just want to say hats off to you, Dana. I'm really proud to be with you. Thank you.
Counselor Franks.
This coming Saturday, we have our Ward Four meeting. It starts at 9:30 to 11:00, and we will have a speaker on the lodging licensing program and how that benefits the entire city, so we're looking forward to that. It will be followed by an open forum, and the Counselor Skilling will have to kind of field mostly because my bees are arriving on that same day, and my husband, I don't think, is going to want to pick them up alone, so I will be leaving early. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. We had our Ward One meeting this last Saturday, and we had an interesting speaker, Tim Jackson, who's the president of the Colorado Automobile Dealers Association. And he gave an update on different legislation and things that are going on. And afterwards, it was interesting to me that some people felt he was very left and some people felt he was very right. And in the world that we live right now, we all have our own filters for the way that we are hearing and seeing what's out there. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Bida?
Go report, Mayor.
All right. So I'm going to dig in a couple things here. Two really cool shout-outs. Jeffco Schools Foundation had held their gala on Friday night, and Pastor Reg Cox received a really cool prestigious award for all that he's done for Jefferson County public schools and just connecting and trying to help make our community a better place. So it was quite an honor to be there and see him accept that. He does so much for our city, whether it's leading the Faith Coalition or working with our homeless, a lot of great things. So congratulations to him. And then, it was an awards week. On Thursday night, Metro West Housing won a ULI Impact Award. I think this is the second year in a row Lakewood's won an Impact Award, and this was for their project 5200, right down the street, the old Martishang Building and the new redevelopment. That's a beautiful, affordable housing development, and they beat out the Dairy Block and Base Camp, which is a really cool project up in Silverthorne. So congratulations to them. And Wheat Ridge, our neighbors, won a cool Impact Award for their redevelopment of the Fruit Dale School up on 44th. It's getting close to census time. While it may not seem like it is, the city has a lot of work to do. And so I thank you for those that may have submitted some names. It seems like it might be a little bit challenging, but we're going to start to put that together and get that group formed. So if you have anybody else that you would like to add to that, I would much appreciate getting that taken care of. And then I've briefed folks a little bit on transportation issues as part of a larger scale, whether it's Dr. Cog or metro mayors, there's discussions going on currently about potentially allowing MPOs, which would be our Dr. Cog, the ability to look at asking for additional funds through the voters. That's in its really kind of preliminary early stages. Then also a debruising measure that could be referred through the state legislature that would address transportation, education. I think there's a third one, but not exactly sure, but you'll probably hear more about that as that comes down the, down the pike and potentially through our council legislative committee. And lastly, I would just say, I need to remind council that when you do a city council request form, that form goes right through Mary Ruthur and onto the schedule. It doesn't come to the mayor's desk to say yes or no, thumbs up or thumbs down. I think there's, was some confusion, and I want to reiterate that, that I have no say in your council requests. Those go through Mary and come out here. So if you have any further questions on that process, I think it's pretty cut and dry, please let me know. And with that, that concludes what I have to say. Madam Clerk? Mr. Cox? Ms. Hodgson? All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you, our police agent, for hanging out with us tonight, and we will adjourn at 10:15.